Good evening, everybody. Stand for the voice, please.
[inaudible]
Pleasure to be listening to the flag.
Flag.
United States of America. To the Republic where we stand. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with every justic. And just. Please, everybody remain standing. We lost another good public servant to the city of West Haven. Retired Chief Billy Abbott. He was the West Haven firefighter in the center district for thirty-three years. He worked his way up from lieutenant, to captain, to deputy chief, to chief of the fire service. Billy was also a twenty-fifth Infantry Division during the Vietnam War. He got a combination of the bronze medal and many more medals. At the fire station, he was known as a part of the Firehouse Fury Five. I'll put your power heads. I hope everybody had a nice holiday yesterday. And Stacy will read the roll call.
Councilman Gary Donovan.
Councilman Gary Donovan, Councilwoman Lard, present.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor, Councilwoman Lard, present.
Councilman Ron Quagliani is absent. Councilwoman Bridget Hosky is absent. Councilwoman Melie Garthwaite.
Councilwoman Melie Garthwaite, Councilwoman Lard, present.
Councilwoman Sarah Acbarali.
Councilwoman Sarah Acbarali, for District President.
Councilman Mitchell Gallagnano.
Councilman Mitchell Gallagnano, for District President.
Councilwoman Robin Watt Hamilton.
Councilwoman Robin Watt Hamilton, for District President.
Councilwoman Kathy Tucker.
Councilwoman Kathy Tucker, Councilwoman Lard, present.
Councilman Victor Boris is absent. Councilman Robert Bruno.
Councilman Robert Bruno, Lake District President.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone is absent. Chairman Peter Massaro.
Chairman Peter Massaro, Six District Councilman, present.
And we have a forum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Stacy, and now we'll have a public session. Anybody like to come up and address the council? Would any... Oh, would anybody like to come up and address the council? Yes.
Thank you.
Are your mic controls on?
[inaudible].
Yeah.
[inaudible]. Sir.
Good evening. I'm not sure that they are. Eleanor Samba, eighteen, Fourth Avenue, with an update. As arts liaison to the city of West Haven and president of Arts West CT, West Haven's public facing arts service organization. I'd like to present a few highlights from our annual meeting from March twenty-ninth. We announced that during, since the last annual meeting, we presented twenty events, all free and open to the public. Two were virtual, eighteen were in person. I won't read you the whole list, but they covered a lot of different life stages in the arts, as well as different populations and partnerships. We gave away forty complimentary tickets to theater performances and participated in a Fall Family Resource Fair at the West Haven Community House. We brought Latin percussionist Moises Vasquez into the West Haven Child Development Center for a two-day residency, delivered lesson plans in visual arts to a hundred and five, three, and four-year-olds at the center, and donated instruments for them to use as an educational resource. We've been attending the monthly Early Childhood Council meetings. We've established a partnership with Bridges Healthcare whereby they have us curating artwork by local artists. We installed it in their offices at ninety-eight Elm Street. They've also invited us to arrange for classes taught by local artists, which they pay for for their Young Adult Services Program. Our poetry panel at West Haven High School last fall kicked off the tenure of Connecticut poet laureate and West Haven resident Antoinette Brim Bell that got funding from CT Humanities and was featured in their annual report. Students from the University of New Haven recorded it, and a recording of the event is up on the Arts West CT YouTube channel. Arts West CT worked with University of New Haven's Department of Media and Communications to expand an arts journalism initiative. We introduced them to New Haven's art paper and are in the process of preparing a dining guide, a cultural dining guide, in partnership with the Milford Regional Chamber of Commerce, and helping to steer other tourism-related initiatives under the banner of WHAM, West Haven and Milford. Our fundraising efforts attracted support from over eighty individual donors and met all the requirements to secure seven thousand five hundred, the maximum contribution allowed from the Sustainable CT Local Matching Fund. Dominate the Day Foundation contributed twenty-five hundred specifically for children and youth programs, and we have been invited to submit an application to the Rotary Club at the start of their next fiscal year. I'm just giving you an overview programmatically of how Arts West CT is working to strengthen arts and culture in West Haven, and this is simply a pilot year and one that we hope to build on with your support. I'm happy to close by letting you know that the city is co-presenting Make Music Day this year. I have the paperwork signed by Tom McCarthy, and that's based on last year's going smoothly and seeming to add value to the events at Old Grove Park. That'll be the first day of summer, and hope to see you all there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eleanor. Anybody else like to come up and address the council? Yes, Mrs. Weinstein.
Paige Weinstein, twenty, Platte Avenue. This week, one of our police depart, one of our police lieutenants left our, left our force. Sergeant, Lieutenant Scott Kleinecht left after twenty-one years to take a job in Nogatuck. Taking a job because of the fact that he's concerned about the city's financial position and the lack of pension and what's going forward. With the fact that the pension still remains an outgoing, an ongoing problem, who is going to take on the role or take the torch to ensure that we no longer lose police officers? The police commissioner said that they were budgeted for a hundred and twenty-one officers, of which we only have a hundred and eleven officers. I also know that we have a couple officers who've been hurt on the job that are still on the roster because there is no pension to take care of them moving forward. So until the pension gets resolved, these officers are still listed in the one hundred and eleven. At what point, at what point do we stop and say enough is enough and wait for this pension to come from, to come to you? Or does somebody stop and say, we need to hire outside of the city to get the information that we need so that we can properly manage and we can properly support our police force? Last, in the last month, obviously, we've lost lots of people. And when I say lost, I'm talking about leaving their positions, not, unfortunately, we've lost people's lives, but we've lost people here. Doug Coulter, in his remarks as he was leaving, stated that he wore five different hats in this city, all different jobs. When the mayor was questioned about the positions of these, you know, who's going to take on these five roles, her answer in writing was, it's all set, a plan has already been put in place without elaborating on that. As the council, we have a person that left that wore five critical hats in this town. I'd like to see the council step up and ask for a list of employees and open positions so that they can also let us know as citizens and as people that read the newspaper where we stand on these things. We open the paper, we see the current article and say, wow, we're down ten police officers, Doug Coulter wore five different hats, now Lou Esposito has left. We have no update on any of that, and not through anybody's fault. I don't know that any of you have updates on that. But somebody needs to take the torch and somebody needs to stop and say, we have an obligation to the citizens. We have also the trash issue. My question is not about the green bags, the orange bags, but back on March eighth, there was an article in the New Haven Independent that went on to say that we, West Haven, was going to be part of a, we're going to be the co-applicant on a grant that would pay for key combusting machinery to be housed in West Haven but shared with partners Hamden, Branford, and New Haven. So there is a grant, a forty thousand dollar, a forty million dollar grant that supposedly we are co-applying for with New Haven, in which we will have machinery here, like the machinery that's in Southington, that burns the green, the food scraps and puts them into energy. Well, it's pretty amazing to think that we don't hear about this from West Haven, but we hear about this from New Haven. And again, not through any fault of anybody's here, I don't know that you all know that. But somebody needs to stop and say, we need to know what's going on, and in my opinion, the citizens should know what's going on. There should be transparency. It all boils down to transparency. When we talk about the car, and I'm not going to beat the point about the car, the mayor's car, that was not the only car that was purchased without MARB's authority. On ten, five of twenty-two, there was a fifty-eight thousand Ford F-350 that was also purchased without MARB's authority. And that was on a report that was produced and provided to the MARB Subcommittee last week. Again, saying the fact that there's a mistake or there doesn't need to be this transparency, I just think that it's wrong. I don't blame anybody that's sitting on this board in front of us. I do believe that somebody needs to stop and say, enough is enough, this reflects us as well, and we took an oath to the residents, and we need to do right by them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. [inaudible]. Anybody else like to come up and address the council? Yes, Mr. Cohen.
Good evening, everyone. Barry Lee Cohen, two-three-two Morgan Lane. I don't have anything sexy here to talk about, except that I did miss because of personal obligations, the budget hearing, the public budget hearing, and so I just had my comments I'd like to give this evening. Some of this I've been saying year after year in session, but I'm going to say a lot of it publicly now. Some of this sounds really fundamental, but fundamentally, we've been not doing it, and so now I think it's time that we do it and we do it right. And I have six points here that I'm going to try to get through as quickly as I can. One of them is, you've all gotten the budget in your hands, and I want you to be careful when you look at that budget because you have the proposed budget from the particular department managers, and then you have the proposed or recommended budget by the mayor. Stop right there. You should be requesting, and it's easily to be obtained, to review the actual spends of those departments for the last three years. It will help you to determine if the lines truly do require increases, as well as if increases or decreases in non-mandatory overtime are warranted. As we know, some departments are contracted or required to have overtime, such as the police, as well as other selected departments. Number two, given our regrettable MARB Tier Four status, I also strongly suggest, when I was on the council, it was suggested, and then there was a modified version of it that was put out on the floor in the past, that a percentage of the overtime, anywhere from ten to twenty percent of the overtime, so you may approve a certain overtime, but take ten or twenty percent of that overtime and put it into a contingency. The reason why is, as we've all witnessed in the past, if you're a council person or anyone sitting out here, you give a department overtime and you know they're going to use every penny of that overtime without any monitoring whatsoever because they control their budgets and the lines. Therefore, a second wave of justification by putting that ten or twenty percent of that overtime into contingency fund, that they have to come back to you, and you have to question, why do you need this money? That second wave is not only warranted, but it's also being, words that we don't hear from this administration, fiscally responsible. That comes down to another fundamental that I talked about every budget season. Zero-based budgeting. What that means is, very basically, just because something was budgeted the prior year doesn't, do not give an automatic pass. Some things, once they're on that Excel spreadsheet, they just live there forever, and they get populated with that increase, and it just moves on and on through the process. As I detailed extensively last year and was begrudgingly adhered to by this administration, and this is a sensitive topic, but you look at your budgets, and you'll all recall this, no increases in pay for elected positions of the mayor or city clerk. Per the absolute intent of the state statute and as followed by other municipalities, as well as state elective offices, any pay increases for elected officials, should they be full-time, part-time, or stipend, should only go into effect upon a new term of office, which means December twenty-twenty-three. Any increases that you approve should not start on July first, they should start on December of twenty-twenty-three, not in the middle of someone's elected term. They know what they, they know what the job entailed, they understood what it was contracted for, and it would, and any new passage of it does not happen in the middle of someone's term. As for the two registered voters that do an exceptional job, I'm sorry, but no increases should be considered until a new term begins in January of twenty-twenty-four. They have three-year terms, which means it should be stricken from this year's twenty-three, twenty-four budget that you're deliberating on now and should be considered as part of the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget. As I have stated on multiple occasions and has been published on multiple occasions, I support the salary increases that are necessary to attract and retain talented individuals to pursue elected office, but let's But let's follow the intent and the meaning of the law and the best practices of other municipalities. West Haven has become the Wild West on this. Now, I will tell you this, because we put up with this last year too, where the mayor was told that two lawyers approved it, and later on, they basically backtracked on it. Well, guess what? If you get some erroneous explanation from this administration that such increases in the middle of a term is legal, don't buy it. And if you do buy it, please, please ask yourself, is it ethical? I hope you agree that the answer is a resounding no. And for MARB, I know you're listening out there, MARB, don't let this administration once again continue to go rogue with their budget practices. I have other areas of the budget I would love to be talking about, I'll be here in two weeks to talk about them. I thank you so much, God bless you all, and thank you for all the good work that you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Anybody else like to come up and address the council? Would anybody else like to come up and address the council? Third and final time, does anybody else like, yes, Steve? Got a minute?
Probably 30 seconds, I don't have much.
All right.
All right, so I'm Stephen Mullens, 22 Oak Road in Allentown. I'm only here tonight out of gratitude. Now, I have not always, or actually very rarely, agreed with Lou Esposito. But I want to take this opportunity to thank him for his decades of service to the city of West Haven in numerous capacities, having served many years in the 1980s as the fire commissioner in Allentown, on the West Haven City Council in the 6th District from 1985 to 1981, as a state representative from the 116th, from 1993 to 2017, I think it was, as well as his most recent position as Chief of Staff to Mayor Rossi, which, in that position, he also served as the interim Public Works Commissioner. Not to mention his service in the military, I don't know exactly what branch. So for that, I think he should be thanked, I think there should be some type of a public recognition of him, because not many people have put that many consecutive years, decades, in the service of West Haven, whether you agree with them or not. And like I said, there's a whole lot I didn't agree with him, but I do acknowledge the fact that he was or is a fine West Haven public servant. And that's all I've got. I have some fireworks to list.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come up and address the council? Would anybody else like to come up and address the council? Third and final time, does anybody else like to come up and address the council? Public session is closed at 7:23. Our meeting opened at 7:23, and I'd like to have a motion to approve the March 27th meeting. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. The approval for the special meeting for April 3rd, 2023? Any questions? All approved? Any abstentions? One abstention? Two abstentions?
Akbar Ali and Tucker.
Mm-hmm. Motion passes. All in favor? Motion passes, majority. Okay, Corcoran Reed, the communications?
We have Communication A from Abdul Qadir, City Engineer, regarding SCROG Hazard Mitigation Plan Update, January 2023, being assigned to the Legislative Matters Committee Chairman Bruno. We have Communication B from Rick Spire regarding the engagement of Premier Parking Services LLC for targeted parking monetization being assigned to the Finance Committee Acting Chairwoman Hamilton. Communication C from Nancy R. Rossi regarding, Mayor Nancy R. Rossi, regarding the budget transfer from CDA block grant fiscal year 2022-2023 to the Public Works Street Paving being assigned to the Finance Committee Acting Chairwoman Hamilton. And that concludes the communications for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, tonight, we'll start with Communication A. Mr. Bruno?
Legislative Matters Committee. Legislative Matters Committee.
Yeah, Legislative.
Time is 7:26. Committee on, sorry, Committee on Legislative Matters is now in session. Members present, Councilwoman O'Connor, Councilman Gallagano, Councilwoman Acabel, myself acting as chair. We have before us tonight Communication A from Abdul Qadir, City Engineer, regarding SCROG Hazard Mitigation Plan Update, January 2023. Can I have a motion and bring it out favorably?
No move.
Second.
Second we have. Abdul, can you come up to explain that to us, please, of the discussion?
Time's up.
Time's up, Abdul.
Good evening, everybody. Abdul Qadir, City Engineer, West Haven.
Abdul, can you just explain to us, you know, this automatically renews every five years, and what, what does this actually, explain what?
This was required, the first one, actually, we started in 2014, that was the first iteration of this one. And second, we did in 2018, and this is 2023. Every five years is supposed to be updated, is required by FEMA, if you want any assistance for FEMA, whether it's emergency or project-wise, we need this plan, otherwise, we are not eligible for federal funding.
Okay, so that's what this plan is?
Yes.
So we're, makes us comply for federal funding? And this has been upgraded in 2023?
That's correct. We, they're required to update what action we're going to take in the next five years. So we have a list of items being described here.
Yeah, I read it, yep. Does anybody within the committee have any questions?
Are there any major changes that should be noted from the previous plan to this year's plan?
Not real change, I mean, we have some additional projects that we have incorporated in this plan that was not in 2018.
Okay, so it's listed everywhere?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Anyone else, anyone else in the committee? About council as a whole, any questions on this? Robert?
Oh, you saw my little nod?
I did.
Wow, you're good. Hi, Abdul, how are you?
Good.
So can you tell me about, what were the projects, some of the projects in the last five years with the last grant?
We did the Beach Street Phase 1, that was in 2018. We also did the design work for Phase 2 as part of the plan, and we'll be implementing in 2023, the second phase. The other project, we did beach nourishment at Seven Rock Beach, that was part of the original plan, 2018. We did the Co River Tide Gate, that was also part of the original 2018 project.
And how much money, how much is the grant?
It depends on each project, and it's not strictly from FEMA, like Beach Street was not a FEMA money, it was NRCS, city money. And Co River Tide Gate was actually the ECD money.
Oh, so they come from all different kinds of grants?
All different sources, yes.
All sources, okay. And can you just tell me, like, a couple of the, you know, what do you have planned? Like, what are future projects?
We're looking for future money for beaches, dune, and beach reservations, and we are also looking money for flood control projects like Co River, one of the projects is Lydia Street area.
That's what I wanted to hear, can you say that again?
Yeah, we have applied for a grant for that one.
Okay. Thank you. I'm all set.
All set.
Yep.
Anyone else? Councilman Goff?
Hi, Abdul, how are you?
Good.
Good. So I have a specific question on page 56, and it says, it's the chart that shows, it's number four, the Beach Street Road Raise, and it says, construction will start in October 2022 and completion expected in December 2023. I know, I think, when do we, when do you think we'll start if MARB approves it on the 13th?
It's before the MARB, for this Thursday, if they approve it, then the contract will be signed probably end up next week.
Okay.
And then the project will start probably in May, early May.
Early May, okay. But they don't actually have to physically be there, they could, they could be gathering their materials?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so we really don't technically know when we'll start to see action?
They will be putting detour signs and those things, and setting up their campsite or staging area.
Okay, okay. All right, great, thank you so much.
Okay.
Anyone else?
How you doing, Abdul?
Good, thanks.
Just to go off of Councilwoman Garthwait, Phase 2 is going to go from where we ended Phase 1, how far down Beach Street would Phase 2 be?
Marah Avenue.
Oh, it'll go all the way, so pretty much?
Yes.
The whole thing, all right. I didn't know if it was going halfway, and then we had to do another, perfect. That's it, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Abdul.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Committee on Legislative Matters is closed, 7:31.
Thank you, Councilman Bruno. Now, we'll take it, Councilman as a whole, we'll have the ARPA updates. We already said that, yeah. You got one?
Blind people.
These keep getting bigger and bigger.
They are getting bigger.
It's a good thing.
And these are the small packets.
I gotta buy a special briefcase just to carry this.
Everybody has one?
Yeah.
You got more or no?
Yes.
I need one, please.
Need one more.
Dave's trying to give his away, we're not letting. So I've got the project tracker for your review, I blew it up, it's easy to read. As always, everything in yellow is in the discretionary column, that does not require that it fit in a particular ARPA category, it's discretionary, that's limited $10 million. Everything else is subject to federal rules, a specific category, and if it doesn't fit in the category, it gets rejected. Starting with 01, ARPA Act Financial Management, we have $700,000 in that bucket, we've spent $235 to date, and we have another 70 on the horizon. Child Development Roof, we've spent $11,450 in design, that is actually ready to go out to bid. Parks Fund, we had $1 million, it says we've spent $36,000, we've probably spent more, like $80,000, but the bills haven't made the chart yet. And if you go into your packet and you go to page number two, you will see a comprehensive report on all the parks and all the work that's been done throughout the city. And a lot of that work, as you can see, is opening parks up for public use, taking care of deferred maintenance, redoing pavilions, bringing in playscapes, it's quite an exhaustive list. We will spend that $1 million on parks as the council asked. Next, we go to the Food Bank, we have $400,000 allocated, and we have $100,000 that has been spent to date. The three, 501(c)(3) organizations have not spent any money yet, because they're still working out their subrecipient agreement. The rules and regulations and compliance part of spending federal money results in at least a four-to-six-month negotiation on contracts. It's not easy. I have an exhaustive list of the rules and regulations, you need an attorney, you need an accountant at all times, so that money is still, has to be spent. Now, on that point, what we did do is we put the Food Bank back out to bid, and we did receive three additional bids that are unfunded right now, for a total of, the three requests total $175,000. Those applications are in your booklet, and they're all West Haven entities, and we'll go through those when I get to those in the booklet here. Moving on, I've got the Johnson Senior Center, we have not gotten a bill from the architect yet, but that is well into design. The architects are very skilled and very excited about this project, they're doing a BIM model, they're redrawing the inside of the building, they're going to present it to us in 3D, show us where everything goes and all the work that's going to be done, so that money will be spent soon, but it is in design right now. We exhausted the DPW paving amount of $2 million. Stormwater Capital Fund, that's matching grant money, we've committed $207,024 to that, and that's bringing in bigger fish, if you will, you know, we're responsible for 20% of matching funds, and that takes, that comes out of that fund. The Stormvac Truck, we actually budgeted $530,000, we've only spent $502,000. And if you go to page number 66, you will see a picture of the truck, which is presently in West Haven, at the supplier's headquarters. We have a checklist that we worked off of when this went out to bid, we're taking that checklist, we are down with the truck, and we're checking off every single item that we purchased. Once that is achieved, I will send an email to your finance director and tell your finance director that it's ready to go. At that point, we will get a check, and we will get the title, and the truck will be turned over to the city, we're hoping for this Thursday. The Stormwater Problem Areas, we've, you've allocated $1,470,000, it says we've only spent $10,000, it's more like $100,000, and this will be updated as those bills are paid. There was an earlier request about $500,000 going to Chestnut Street that has been withdrawn, there have been funds found for that, so we're not going to ask the council to consider that, that 1.470 stays where it is. The Recycling Reuse Center, we've got a design bill of $1,200, it's still under design. Child Pedestrian Safety, we have overspent by, if you go to page 19, by $7,912.03. And what we discovered is, after all these sidewalks were done, there were certain sidewalks near schools that needed to have little retention walls put in to keep them from eroding. So that $7,900, we're asking that the council take that out of contingency with this motion on page 19, and make this account whole, and then we'll close it up. Now, as we've discussed several times in the past, Now, as we've discussed several times in the past, some jobs will come to you with, with an overage and some jobs will come because we're under. In this case, we're over seventy-nine hundred on sidewalks, but we're under about twenty-four thousand on the back truck. So, so we're replenishing your contingency with twenty-four thousand, but we're asking you to pull seventy-nine hundred and make the sidewalks whole. Next, I have the Library. We've spent twenty-three thousand seven twenty-five in their navigator program. And I just got a bill for thirteen thousand that looks legit. So that'll be on the next update. City Hall Windows. The architects have been here. We've looked at metal windows, vinyl windows, wood clad windows. And with the money we have, we think a high quality vinyl window is the way to go. It is maintenance free. The only exception will be the Harriet North courtroom. Those windows are so large, they have to be metal windows. But the rest of City Hall will be vinyl windows. We think we'll be ready for bid in about eight weeks with the full design and then we'll receive the bids, we'll evaluate them and choose a contractor. The Fire Districts are all doing different things with their funds and they're going through compliance. It is because two of the stations are sub recipients, it's very, very complicated how these deals have to be structured. But I can tell you that West Shore is redoing their stations for bigger, larger sleeping quarters. The Center District is redoing the Malloy Station and Allentown is looking to purchase property and do a design for a new building with, with their funds. And all that has to be looked at very closely. We actually do have some very skilled people on this. Sarah Goss from UHY is our lead. Woman's excellent. She knows all the rules inside and out and she's going over this and communicating directly with the firemen. Sort of took me out as the middleman because it's complicated stuff and I wanted them to, to talk directly. So I get reports and I, I report back to you. Boardwalk Cameras, this is ready for bid. This will be brought to finance as soon as Mr. Spire comes back. I have seen a detailed plan with a detailed spec for cameras from West Walk all the way down to Sandy Hook. Those cameras are state-of-the-art cameras that are designed to be along the water. It's the same system that UNH has. And the police can type a license plate into the program and the camera will send them an email and a photograph when they find the license plate. If there is a person they're looking for and they type in red hat, gray sweater, they don't have to search. The camera system automatically gives you a photo of everyone with a red hat and gray sweater. The cameras will not only cover the boardwalk, they'll cover the parking lots and about three miles out to the ocean. In addition to that, we have six call stations going in. These call stations are state-of-the-art vandal proof, waterproof. You hit the call station button, you get connected to nine one one immediately and all the cameras on that pole are directed to that person hitting the button. So we're excited about that. Next, we've got the Police Retention Fund that's spent, the Youth Employment Fund. It is my understanding that ninety-three thousand of the hundred thousand has been spent. We're waiting on paperwork and documentation from the Board of Ed. I did get a lot of it and I sent it up to UHY to review, but that number will change fairly soon. Painter Park Fieldhouse, long process doing a contract with the architects that has finally been settled and that design will happen, begin relatively soon. EMS Premium Pay is waiting for approval. The gas masks and the bulletproof vests are both in. We looked at that equipment, we counted it, we made sure it met the spec and it's been paid. Meeting Room Cameras, we had four companies show up to look at this room, Harriet North and the third floor conference room. Only one company bid. We have a scope review, I think tomorrow, I took my calendar, I think it's tomorrow, here at City Hall to go over the scope. The bid came in at a hundred and eighty thousand out of the two hundred thousand, but that includes not just cameras, but brand new sound systems and brand new displays. So we're gonna upgrade the displays in the room. You'll have, you know, better TVs and, and things like that. And I'll share that with you once we do the, the scope review. And my, my understanding is the design is going to allow a chairman of any committee to come in, hit a button and the taping will begin automatically without the need of a third party to work the cameras. That was the condition on the, on the, the spec that we presented. Demolition Beach Street has been completed. That's done and paid. Housing Crisis Grant Fund. This is a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar spend that's gonna take to twenty twenty-six to spend it all. It includes, as you probably already know, an advocate who works with the homeless. It includes money for hotels and it includes money to pay security deposits and first month's rent. They're working on their subrecipient agreement and that will be handed over to the Columbus House and they'll use this three fifty to perform those services. Haley Ramp, we do not have an engineer on that yet, but we will soon. The West Haven Turf is designed and we have a price coming in on the eighteenth, a final price based on the design. And that's the turf, the track and the baseball field. Savin Rock Playscape and Groundscape, we have issued approval to, to start those jobs at Savin Rock. I believe they'll, they'll happen sometime in, in May. Noble Community Center, rooftop is in design. That's the RT units that are gonna go on the new roof. Electrical, main breakers and circuits for city buildings. That money is available to Public Works and I do not have an update as to how much of that they put out to bid yet. Carrigan Boilers, that is under design. They're talking eight to ten weeks until we can go out to bid for new boilers and new piping. Now, I heard there was some confusion when the superintendent was here. I just wanna go back. So if you look at the capital plan, we always had two point one million dollars twice, a year apart. The problem is when you bond the money, you have one shot at it. By using ARPA funds, we will have a, a set price before we have to go to bonding and I think the project will be far less than four point two million dollars. We wouldn't have that opportunity if we didn't have the ARPA funds. So you took, you took two point one off the bonding list. You save that money, but you also open the door to us getting a full, complete price before we ask for bonding and we think it'll be less than four point two. That's where we're at. Does that make sense? Emergency Bleacher Repair, that, my understanding is, is out to bid. If you move on down the list, we have Project Description. We have paving. A million dollars in reserve for paving, which fits in the discretionary fund. We have a million dollars sitting here for the library. Aid to Small Business. In your packet, I have the actual application which was developed by UHY in the, in Carmody, based on what other cities and towns are doing. And that's in here somewhere, hold on. It's called the Draft Business Lease Rental Incentive Program. Let me find it, yep. Okay, it looks like page fifty-four. Go to page fifty-four. So, so this is a similar application that's being used all over the country. We have gotten numerous phone calls for businesses to take advantage of this program. We're asking that the council consider moving this from the reserve pile to an active pile so ARPA can put this out to bid and in the next few months start spending down some of this money. And that's the, that's eight hundred thousand. And there's a resolution in your packet, which if you decide to do that tonight, you could, that resolution supports that action. Next, we have Art Center. We have five hundred thousand in reserve. Should you decide to make that an active project, we will have a similar application to what you see with the business rental and we would put that out to bid and evaluate the, the returns. From here, you go down to your contingency in orange. You have nine hundred and twenty-one thousand in contingency based on this plan. And then you've got eight hundred thousand in projects that have been mentioned, but no action. Mag Locks for City Hall, Storage Shed for the Police Department, the remodel of College Street Lockers and the supplemental Food Bank that I had mentioned earlier. Now, if you go to the food applications, they are, First Lutheran Church is, has a fifteen thousand dollar ask. Wheat has a hundred and eight thousand dollar ask and the West Haven Community House has a forty thousand dollar ask. And that's where we're getting the, the one seventy-five. So if the council wants to consider moving some of these monies to active, we would ask that the eight hundred thousand for business may be moved up to an active project. We'd ask that the council consider the one seventy-five ask and additional food assistance with those three organizations. And those, and then the, the third one is straightening out the books on the sidewalks for seventy-nine hundred dollars.
Anybody got any questions for Ken? Go away man.
So it's been a little while. I kind of forgot what we said we were gonna do for the businesses.
So the idea is that-
We get a plan?
Yeah, the, the idea is that if you, if a business comes in and signs a lease, a long lease, five, seven years and longer, the ARPA funds would pay their rent one month for every year they sign up to seven years, seven months. And that's how communities are bringing businesses in with ARPA money. It's, it's allowed through the ARPA rules. You're not allowed to promote your town with ARPA money, but this particular item is allowed. So, so we would, and then if you have another business that the lease has expired or about to expire and you get them to commit to another five or seven years, then they could get, you know, five or seven months of rent from the ARPA funds. That's how that works. That's about the only way to support your business community with ARPA funds and still meet the federal guidelines.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just have one question. The Art Center Phase Two Construction, you said Art Center, right? So are we, are we sticking with Art Center? What are we doing?
I, I don't think we're sticking with that building, Art Center, but I think, I think what would happen is we would put an RFQ out and ask organizations in the arts what their plan is for bringing an art storefront, if you will, to Campbell Avenue. And by the way, we've got Hartford Healthcare just left Campbell Avenue, two buildings over there. You've got the old bank on this corner. So there are buildings very close to City Hall that are in much better shape than what's on Center Street. And they would tell us what, how they're gonna spend the five hundred thousand, what they're gonna bring to West Haven. Now, some organizations may say, "We're gonna use your five hundred thousand, do this." Other organizations may say, "We're gonna take our own five hundred thousand, put it with your five hundred thousand and do this for you." So that's how that works. But until we put it out to bid, we won't know what, what comes in. And we don't accept anything. We, we put it out to bid. We can put it out to bid a second time if we don't like what we see the first.
Okay. So I have another question then. Can an organization get both the Arts Center and then get the Small Business? Can you get those two pots of money? The same organization?
I think they probably could, but I have to check with UHY on that.
Okay, I'm curious about that.
The rent, yeah. So actually the business wouldn't get it. The landlord renting the store to the arts would, yes, they could.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
If you could just double check that.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a, that's a fair question, yep.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
I had the question about the, the mental health resolution. Remember I brought that up at the last meeting?
It is in the book.
I do see it. It's in the book.
And it's ready for you, yep.
And if we agree to it, can you explain how the organizations would have to, does that have to go to bid also?
Yes. The, the rules of this money do not allow you to pick any individual or organization. Everything has to be advertised. And in this case, this hundred thousand could be advertised or if there's a city program that is already in the works, I believe we could fund that. So, so I do have a fourth resolution here, request, which is the hundred thousand.
Do you have any of the applications with you in case there happens to be someone here that needs one? For the mental health bid?
So the way it works is once you approve the funds, then I pay through ARPA funds, the attorney in UHY to develop that application. Takes about a month. We review it, everybody's happy and then it goes out. So, so until you, until you approve the hundred thousand, nothing happens.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Broon?
Ken, when you, when you look at a few of the lines that are coming across and, and there's no, no movement, like for example, the police department's shed. Where are we at with that? Where?
So we call those projects below the line. The council has not elevated them to projects. So until the council says we want to turn the police shed into an actual project and take it out, take it from below the line, move it up, we don't do any work on it at all.
Okay. And if we look, if we talk about the aid to small businesses at eight hundred thousand dollars, how did you come up with that number? Is that just?
So that number was originally proposed by the mayor for a million. And my understanding is the way you guys wrote, the council wrote the resolution was up to a million. We, we, looking at all the products that we, the operating committee proposed to the council, that got reduced to eight hundred thousand. But you've got a lot of businesses in town, you've got a lot of empty storefronts, you've got a proven track record that this rent incentive works in other towns and cities. When a business has an opportunity to go to Stratford or West Haven and they come to West Haven and the first seven months the rent's paid, guess where they're going, in most cases? So it's a way to draw businesses in.
So what municipalities in the area are doing it that way?
The, the ones that were the basis for design of our application have had a lot of success with that program, is my understanding.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
Any other? I don't have questions.
You said that if they sign a lease for seven months, they get one month paid per year.
No, no, no. If, if they sign a lease for seven years-
Seven years.
They get seven months paid.
So they could do, take that seven months in the first year? Cause that's what I, I-
Yeah.
The only reason I'm asking is because that's what you sounded like, you just-
I, I, I believe it is the first seven months, yes. And that gives them time to set up and be in their new business, their new storefront.
You have half a year or three.
Yeah, yeah. If they do a five-year lease, it's five months.
Right. No, I just wanted, just the way you've said it, that it sounded like they could get the seven months in the first year. And then skate and-
But, you know, when the business comes in, you've got tax money on their assets. You've got a storefront that's filled. You've got job opportunity. You've got more traffic in areas that have empty buildings. It's a good program.
No, I, I think that's a great idea. That's a great incentive to get somebody in here. You're gonna have seven, three months of rent, right? I mean, that's-
You, you think of the storage facilities, a lot of competition? The ones that fill up quickly, they say you can rent a storage unit from us and the first month is free. Thank you.
I have a question. Going back to that small business. What, what is a small business? Like how do you determine a small business?
Um, a small business, there are actually federal guidelines. And I believe it's like under five hundred employees, not more than twenty-five million a year in revenue, that kind of stuff. I don't have the figures with me. But there's a defined, there's a, there's a defined small business definition.
Thank you.
Would I have to make a motion?
My motion would be to pay seven thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and three cents to project number two zero two two dash zero one two, Child Pedestrian Safety. cents to project number two zero two two dash zero one two, child pedestrian safety. Since we, that was the overspend of it.
So, yeah, go ahead.
We have a motion?
I was gonna second. Go ahead, second. Can I just, can I reword that again?
Yeah, if you go to page nineteen.
Yeah, I have it.
Okay.
So, if we could just reword it, that, that would say that the city council hereby appropriates funding for the following project, child pedestrian safety, specifically further work on sidewalks, crosswalks, and/or repairs around school facilities in the additional amount of seven thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and three cents. That would be the actual motion.
Correct.
Oh, what?
Yes.
I thought that would come afterwards.
Nope. That's the motion, and, and Councilwoman O'Connor seconded it.
Any, yeah. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to put aside a hundred thousand dollars for the community mental health and health needs. The hundred thousand dollar appropriation will be used to meet the increased demand for services to address health problems emanating from the impact of COVID-19 pandemic. The funds will be used to provide child and adult outpatient services, psychiatric evaluations, and medication management, mobile crisis opiate service, case managing, and wraparound services, and other similar ser, similar services for COVID-related health issues. Thank you.
What page is that on, Congress?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
Counselor Magoth, would you second that?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, please, second.
Any questions?
So, I, I have, I just, it's on page, what page did you say? Seventy-five.
Who will provide these services?
So, I'm just gonna revise that just a little bit, that we're appropriating or funding. You said that, right?
I did. I said a hundred thousand appropriation will be used to meet.
Okay. Okay.
I asked Ken specifically, and he said that that has to go out to bid like everything else.
Yeah, the, the exception may be, and I'll find out for you, if the hundred thousand could fund existing programs, that might be a possibility. So, I'll go back to that.
Thank you.
So, so are we getting into the business of providing healthcare?
Uh, healthcare already exists. We're, we're using ARPA funds that are allowed to be used to supplement that healthcare. And that, that healthcare is specific to, she just read, uh, mental healthcare.
Mental health. Yeah. That's what I'm asking, so if you're, so then that would mean somebody's providing it already?
Correct.
So, who, who is providing it already?
Uh, I don't know the organizations, but they would have to bid to get that hundred thousand, to supplement it for West Haven residents. If there's a city program, which I'm not aware if there is or not, that could be funded as well.
There's some already in the city. Hill Health is in the city. Bridges does an awful lot in the city of West Haven. The money would go to, one of those, you know, they would both have to apply for it, and the money would go to, you know, who applies for it and is already doing those services. The city's not gonna do them.
Okay.
We have enough issues, we, we can't do that.
We'll be, we'll be a client. We'll be a client.
Yes.
Going off that, say it was the two, Hill Health and, and Bridges. Would that be, could we split that?
Of course, yeah. When the applications come in, we evaluate it, and then we, we would split it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah. But I'm sorry. Where is this hundred thousand dollars coming from?
Well, in this case, it'll come from the nine twenty-one contingency.
Right, so, but it was a hundred thousand dollars.
And now you have eight hundred and twenty-one thousand left in contingency.
You have eight, oh, that's not shown here.
No, no, you have nine twenty-one, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand in contingency.
Yeah.
We're gonna reduce that by a hundred thousand.
Take a hundred, a hundred. Gotcha.
Just change that nine to an eight.
Got it.
And that'll be, that'll be project two oh two three dash oh one four.
Thank you.
Oh, one four?
Yes.
What was that number again, two oh two three?
Uh, two oh two three dash oh one four. That'd be the next project on the list.
Oh, all right.
All set. Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. I would like to make the motion on the small business project to start.
What page is that on? Ken, what page is that on?
Looking for it right now. It's about halfway through, I think. Page sixty?
I think it's sixty.
After the application, yep. Page sixty is the correct resolution.
That says a million on it, though, so you might.
Yeah. Eight hundred thousand. That's gotta be changed.
No, no, go to the second page. It's all, we wanna keep everything in order. Go to page sixty, and then sixty-one is your eight hundred thousand.
Thank you. Oh. Want me to read it?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll read it.
I did.
I'll, I'll read it. The motion is gonna be that the city council hereby supplements, modifies, and clarifies its prior resolution dated May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two regarding the aid to small businesses, aid to small businesses, that prior to city council, the prior, the city council aid to small business resolution dated May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two appropriated one million dollars for aid to small businesses. The resolution provided to formulate a plan and bring back to the council for approval, a plan has been formulated for a business lease incentive grant program to be funded prior, by the prior one million dollar appropriation of the May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. The ARPA committee is authorized to review applications for this program, see exhibit A, attached, and recommend recipients of eight hundred thousand dollars in aid to small businesses in the form of business lease rental incentive grants.
Any questions, discussion?
And Councilwoman Tucker has seconded that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Excellent. That'll become proj, that'll be moved up and come project number two oh two three zero one five.
What was that number again?
Uh, two oh two three slash, or dash zero one five.
Just, I wanted to make one statement here to the council and everybody, that if we don't move on these projects, it takes a long time to get them started. And before we give back the nine million dollars that we have left, I hate to do that for the city, and I'd like to benefit the taxpayers and whoever else involved in this to move on it, at least if we get started on it and we got our foot in the door, the government doesn't take the money back. At least they see there's a project started. So, that's the only thing, you know, I have to say about this here. If we wait any longer, time is running out, we're gonna end up, because all these projects gotta be done by the end of.
We have, we have to have contracts in place by December of twenty-four, and then we have till December of twenty-six. But the headwinds that we're experiencing is that every town and city has similar funds. We're seeing projects that are ARPA-related or non-ARPA-related coming in thirty and thirty-five percent over budget. The contractors have too much work, they're throwing in high numbers, people are not showing up to walk-throughs, or if they do show up to walk-through, they don't bid. We're finding materials are still very costly, and you can't get materials. There are some electrical devices that you need to build a building, they tell you you're a year out. So, the longer we wait on spending this money, the less chance we have of spending the money. It's getting very, very difficult out there. Washington School, we're six and a half million over budget because of, of this kind of activity, because of inflation, because of, you know, everyone's got money to spend on construction, and it's a problem. So, I, I would, you know, like the chairman says, the sooner you allocate this to the ARPA committee to spend, the better chance we have actually spending it. It's getting worse out there by the month.
I don't see in this booklet here a resolution for the arts center.
Um, let me see.
I think it is.
Yeah, I don't think it's in there. But you could, oh, yeah, it is, page sixty-three.
Oh.
So, I have this catch-all resolution. You can cross out what you don't want there. These are the last four projects that fit into the ARPA money, and if you wanna, you know, approve all four, this motion will carry you through that, this resolution will. If you wanna cross some things out, you can do that.
Well, we just approved the aid to small businesses. We already did. For City Hall.
Yes, sure.
If we, if we have extra money in contingency, can we take that money and give it to projects that have already been approved?
The, the answer is yes, is exactly for that, but let me tell you what I think's gonna happen.
Okay.
I think some of these projects are gonna collapse. And what I mean by that is, and I'll just use the, the Paint and Park Fieldhouse. We have a million dollars. Because of the inflation and the problems with shortage of material and so on and so forth, it's a very possibility I come back and say, the lowest bid was one point five million. We don't have one point five million. So, now, you freed up a million dollars to put somewhere else, and that could happen.
Okay.
But your contingency would be applied towards projects as needed, if you can afford it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, Ken, we've already did the aid to small business on, on these, so we would put the other three together in a motion?
You would.
No.
I don't wanna do that.
I'm just asking. Listen, I didn't, I didn't wanna get beat up, I just asked. All right, well, I would like to make a motion to give the five hundred thousand to the arts funding.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
What?
Abstentions?
I have, have to abstain, even though I made the motion, I'm on the board of directors. So, I can't vote. My apologies.
Motion passes unanimously.
Majority.
Majority, I'm sorry.
So, just, yeah, just to clarify, it's that the city council hereby appropriate, appropriates funding for the following projects, and it's going to be reserved arts funding, five hundred thousand.
That's all.
And that's it?
Yep.
Period, end of story?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll have a separate motion sent to you tomorrow from the attorney.
Thank you.
A resolution, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And that will be twenty twenty-three sixteen, Mr. Carney?
You are correct. You figured that out, huh?
I can add one to fifteen and come up with sixteen.
You are, you are correct.
I, I should hope, anyway.
Yeah.
If I can't do that at this point in life, I'm in trouble.
I'm right behind you, buddy.
Counselor Brown, you got a question?
You have one, but I have a question.
Ken?
Yes, sir.
I got two questions for you.
So, we have to wait till Ron comes back.
So, the five hundred thousand dollars for the arts funding is going to be what? Find space, get them, get it off the ground?
So, it, yeah, so it's the city's desire to have an arts center on Campbell Avenue as close to City Hall as possible.
Good.
We will advertise that in an RFQ with the idea that we will donate five hundred to help that happen.
Okay.
And then we will evaluate those responses and award appropriately.
Up to five hundred?
Correct.
Would you be able to explain to the council that the need, or what that two seventy-five is for the police department shed?
So, the, it's my understanding that the Sally Port is rather small, it's filled with a lot of evidence, you put a couple cars in there, you have no room, and as a result, other things are left outside. Signs, for example, are left outside. The mobile command center is left outside. This two seventy-five is budgeted to build an unheated Butler-type building that will allow equipment that is in the Sally Port to go into this Butler building, giving the people who work at, at the police station more room. And that fits nicely with the goal of, of ARPA money.
So, the Sally Ports are full of evidence and whatnot, so there's a problem with space at the, at the R D P D?
That's correct, and this is the least expensive way to address that.
Okay. Because it's chained across, so you can't leave the P D, you would have to be.
That, that I don't know. I, I just know when you go in there, it's jam-packed, other things that should be undercover are outside. You're spending more money on these signs because they get beat up by the weather, there's tarps over stuff to try to protect it. The two seventy-five would give them a fairly large storage space to, to store these items.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Counselor, my, oh, yeah.
So, this would be built right on the police property?
Right behind the police station, subject to engineering, geotech, everything else. I mean, I, I can tell you it's gonna go there, you may get a report that says, move it over ten feet because you got a problem here, you know, but yes, that's the idea.
And I assume that would probably get filled up eventually somewhere down the road, would that be correct?
I, I think that if you look at the amount of items they have to store, another four or five thousand square feet would solve their problem.
So, I guess what I'm asking is that another four or five thousand square, that's how big, the building's bigger than that, though, isn't it?
The Butler Building?
Yeah.
No, five thousand square feet's huge, I mean, it's.
Sixty by sixty.
Yeah, that's only thirty-six hundred square feet.
So, would we fill that building pretty quickly? Or you, you can't answer that there?
Oh, good.
Mr. McCarthy?
The answer right here for you.
Sirs, madams, currently, Public Works has to find storage every year for the police boat. The, we have a Mustang, there is an inordinate amount of stuff. We went and looked at some other town police departments just to see what they did, and one of the big things we didn't talk about was that you'd have the ability to make a lot of your signs in-house. We currently now spend a ton of money. We don't, we are not able to keep supplies of road signs, so everything is, is go order it and pay for it. So, a lot of the other police departments make their own signs, all of the sohorses, barricades, everything stays outside, cones, there's no place to put anything. So, we, Public Works pick up about, we, we spend now about thirty thousand on storage on any given year, because it didn't make any sense to have these generators and things just sitting outside. That's why we desperately need it. Thank you.
All set there, Counselor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
My, my question was along those lines. If we build this, and will we need to build another one in like another ten years because we still are keeping everything, evidence?
No, no, the, the stuff cycles through. It, it goes away after a while, but because of the limited spaces, the commissioner just said, they can't build their own signs efficiently. They're storing stuff outside. It's, it's not like it keeps growing, you don't save it forever. You know, they, they are cycling through, they just don't have enough space to do that.
Thank you.
Counselor, gentlemen?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, I'd like to make a motion to spend the two hundred and seventy-five thousand in storage shed for the police department.
I'll second. Really good.
Discussion? Done? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. I guess that'll be seventeen, right, Ken?
So, with that motion, our contingency is getting lower. My advice to the council is wait before approving the other three projects and see how these projects that we have on the books play out. Because I think I'm gonna be coming back to you and saying, we can't do this project, or we can't, or we need more money for this project. I know, I I wouldn't run the contingency down below what we've done. Is my advice.
Okay. But the stuff that we already have out there, Ken, let's see if we get it. Um, you know, there's some pressure on some of these people.
We've spent a little under seven million dollars to date. And the big stuff is in design, and and that's the issue. It's gonna, it's gonna all come almost at once, but you have to go through a long design process to get there.
Yeah, so Ken, let me, let me ask you. So what we approved tonight, the mental health was in addition, cause that was never on the books, right? And the storage shed would be the second one, right, coming off the contingency?
Correct.
So we're looking at, so basically, what was it, three seventy-five minus that nine twenty-one, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is where we're at? So we're looking at roughly five hundred forty-six thousand out of contingency, if my math is correct.
Sounds about right.
Okay.
Anything else for for Ken?
The lib, the library site is already included, if that, okay.
Yes.
And so we got money back from the VAC, which is good, okay. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thanks, Ken.
Everyone have a wonderful night. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're up to the Finance Committee. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hamilton will be.
Uh yes, the time is now eight twenty-two, and your committee on finance is in session. Members present are Councilwoman O'Connor, Councilwoman Otte Valley, and myself as acting chair. For Councilwoman Hosky and um Chairman, I mean, and Councilman Quagliani is absent also. First thing we want to talk about are updates, and you're on, Mr. Taylor. How are you?
I do well, thank you. How are you?
We meet again.
Yes. So um.
So this is how I'm gonna say it right. Can you please give us the year-to-date budget review?
Well, it seems like you gave me one two weeks ago.
Anything change?
I I really have nothing to report. However, if you have any questions or anything that's kind of lingering in your mind, I certainly write it down, get back to you. No, I'm just gonna try to help you out.
I think the only thing that's still on my mind is um we've asked for the list of the um uncollected grants. Where are we with that?
Um, I thought I reported back the other day. I think, I think we're about another meeting or two away. We'll have that for it.
Cause I can imagine this is awful.
Well, I can also tell you um that the consultant we've hired, their primary focus right now is to collect those grants, to collect those monies. Cause it it it's absolutely true. We have a lot of money out there that needs to be brought back.
Do we know about how much?
I I don't, I'm sorry. There's this colossal amount of money that we've gotten in grants, whether we've performed and it's now due to us or not. I I just don't know those answers.
Do you know when we might get like a list?
Yeah, I, in a month.
In a month?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
It was a little thing.
Nope, I'm sorry. I'm anxious to see it.
Me too.
But thank you for that. Um, does anybody um have anything? Yes, Councilwoman O'Connor?
I'm just excited for the next one.
No questions?
No.
Any questions? Nothing? I'm gonna open up to the council as a whole. Do we have any questions for Mr. Taylor? Yes, Councilwoman Bruno?
Thank you. Would you be able to um, next time you come before us, give us a list of the uh vacant positions that we have at that City Hall?
I I believe that that was provided last Thursday night at at our hearing. Pam Alvino provided that.
Good.
To to at that, at that hearing.
Good.
So um and it, please contact me if if you can't locate it, we'll make sure you get it.
And I know that um it's a real hot, hot button, but um we continue to get told it's being negotiated and whatnot. I mean, at some point, will we be able to get some sort of update on the status of the police pension?
Um, well, it 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 is, yeah, I really, I really can't get, say anything right now on that. But when we say it is in negotiation, it is in negotiation. In other words, it's not stalled.
It's active.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else?
Uh yeah, just to go off, Councilman Broome, that list we had, I thought that was the list of jobs that are being requested.
Both lists were provided.
I didn't get, I don't, I don't know if I.
Maybe, maybe that was just sent to Mr. Quagliani. Um but I'll, I'll make sure that it gets, gets you all.
Yeah, you can all get, thank you, appreciate that.
I'll do a follow-up on that.
Yeah, thank you.
It's, uh, by the way, it's actually provided to the MARB, just thought I'd read it once upon a while. So um.
I don't like talking that out.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's, it's, it's out there, it's just, sorry that it hasn't let me, I'm actually coming out of personnel. Happy to help.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Um, hi, any updates up for the MARB?
Thank you.
Councilwoman O'Connor?
I have notes from the March thirtieth subcommittee meeting. The meeting, uh, some of this may be old news, but it was written that day. The meeting started going over the budget and the five-year plan. Lots of questions were asked, not limited to, but including payroll. Is our current payroll employee overreaching? Should we hire more people in finance? And what will the Whittlesey, Whittlesey Report say? For those of you who don't know, the Whittleseys um company is a consulting group that are here in West Haven, helping us go over our policies and procedures per OPM. So they're gonna be, they're gonna be sending a report not to the MARB to give us ideas of how to do things in a, in a better way. Beach parking, the parking meters will be fixed in time to collect money for this summer. They talked about the pilot trash program. Public Works, overtime and vacancies were discussed. The cost of electricity, it was noted that the Parks Department pays for the electricity that um that's provided to the streetlights. I don't know why it's under Parks Department, but that's where it is. Um, solar panels on city-owned buildings, how much will that save? That's something the MARB wanted to know. Capital expenses, and the big thing is the new firehouse that Allington wants. There'll be eleven, eleven new positions in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. A budget coordinator, two payroll positions, IT, police officers, social worker, two public works, planning and zoning enforcement officer. Those are the ones that were discussed. The MARB has requested a few things, a five-year plan from the fire departments, including benchmarks for consolidation. A copy of the ARPA budget, a list of all grants and drawdowns, a list of who is authorized to sign checks and who can sign contracts and purchases. A list of perks for elected officials, the council, department heads, and appointed positions. Do we have a written policy? Much discussion was had about the purchase of a new car for the mayor's use. In conclusion, the MARB was disappointed, mad, and disgusted that West Haven did not follow policies when purchasing the vehicle. MARB asked two of the West Haven employees to verbally state that they, that this cannot, will not happen ever again. There was discussion about reports that the new finance, financial manager may have to run to ensure that all policies are being followed going forward. And then it was noted that there are a few more times that the policies were not followed. Most of them were for paving in emergencies, however. And then we concluded after almost two and a half hours. Thank you for that.
Yes, Mr. Taylor, we have another question from you, for you, from Councilwoman Tucker, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Colin. Um, Councilwoman Tucker, it's good.
Can you talk a little bit, who's responsible for implementing the recommendations that the MARB is suggesting be put in place for our finance department? These checks and balances that they've been asking for, honestly, for years, that never have been put in place, apparently, or if they have, they haven't been followed?
Ultimately, the finance director.
So that would be your, your jurisdiction there?
My jurisdiction, as of short time ago, yes.
Okay. Can, can you talk a little bit about the plans that you have?
Uh, well, you know, not to, not to get out in front of the um of Whittlesey, but I can tell you what we, what we've already done some things. Uh, one of the, one of the glaring problems that we have, and 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 this is in process with payroll, is that the same person who could change a person's rate of pay was the person who would also pay that person. So now we're, we've, we've just last week hired somebody to work in, in personnel. And as, as you know, we moved the payroll, the payment side of payroll out of personnel and to finance. So now these will be two separate and distinct positions, which will create a segregation of duties that should have been there all along. Right. Um, we are also increasing and stepping up our um, our review of of payments and uh, you know, our invoice review, trying to enhance the controls over that before things leave the door.
Process.
Yeah, sorry.
So an auditing process?
Yes, so we're increasing the audit, as well as increasing our documentation standards. Um, all of our quotes, all of our bids, everything which would have, some of those things, like for the lower value purchases, would have been housed with the department heads. We're now making, uh, just implemented last week, that the department heads or whomever got the quote would forward those quotes to the purchasing, purchasing department. And those things would be maintained there. That way, if I'm looking at the invoices that are being selected for payment, and if there, there's something on there that I'm not familiar with, I can go down to purchasing and I can see the quotes and make, and I can verify, yes, this was handled correctly, and we ought to be paying this money.
So with all the positions that are open right now, do you have enough people on staff? Or are there enough people budgeted, so you don't have to have redundancy in your processes that cause the same people to have to cross over and do functions that would cause them to have maybe a conflict of interest?
I, I, there's really kind of two questions there. One, do, do I think there's enough people budgeted to do, you know, to effectively run the department? I think there may be some gaps, but I don't know enough to, to tell you where those are right now. I am concerned in a couple areas. But do I have a segregation of duties issues, because, you know, my backup person uh might come in? I, I think we can cover that. But there are a few pieces to the pie that I think could use some strengthening and some more analysis as to see where our short, our short, where we're short-staffed, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
I don't want to overstep, get too many people in and have to tell somebody they don't work here anymore, you know?
Yeah, I, I think, I think, and I probably, I'm not speaking for the whole council, but I can certainly tell you that I've heard from loads of people in the community who've asked about, you know, what we're doing as a council, and we hear this all the time, and have, you know, kind of talked about their concerns, voiced their concerns about the fact that these things that the MARB has been recommending have been out there for literally years with nothing done. And I know you're new. But it would be really refreshing to see some things that they've asked for be implemented.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm attempting, yeah, thank you. We're attempting to move on everything that the um, that, you know, that, not only the MARB is giving us, but Commissioner of Public Works is giving us. And, and, but, but um, I'm sorry, you just broke my concentration. Anyway, but, but he was mentioning that we have had a training also of all department heads, people who do requisitions on just how it's gonna work with purchase orders. Uh, I think Rick Spire was here the other day. Yes, Rick described to you our, uh, oh, that was in the, in the budget hearing, our, our no PO, no pay policy that we're putting into effect by the beginning of next year. I, like Mr. Bruno, was very, very surprised to see that that wasn't going on. But on the other hand, not unsurprised from my uh other stints with other municipalities who are struggling with the same issue, so.
I mean, to give credit where credit is due, but also to acknowledge where we have gaps.
Oh, yeah.
We need to do work, so.
Yeah, we have a lot of work to do, and it seems like I find out more to do every day.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions? Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
I've been hearing, hearing, hearing what's going on, the MARB making remarks about the fire service in this city. One department is under the city right now. That department wouldn't be as bad as it is today if it was on its own. Many, many studies were made way back when Larry Minakino was mayor of this city. Many, many studies were made, and a lot of money was spent on taxpayers' money, city's money, which is still taxpayers' money, and districts' money, which is taxpayers' money. Taxpayers are paying for these studies all the time. Every time these studies come out, it's the same answer, every single time. Seems to me, those individuals up there just don't get it. They gotta read the statutes, and if the same study is going on all the time and the same outcome is, stop beating a dead horse. I'm tired. And that's all I gotta say. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman. Anybody else? Okay, again, I want to thank you. Moving along. We have before us tonight Communication B from Rick Spire. We talked about that.
Said the negotiation.
We can get Lee to say the same thing, that would be the only difference. We have before us Communication B from Rick Spire regarding the engagement of Premier Parking Services LLC targeted parking monetization. Do we, I would like to bring it out favorably. And is there, well, I would like to, you're gonna talk to us about it, Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor.
For discussion. Thank you.
Would you like me to give you an overview?
Yeah, please.
So, uh, Tom McCarthy, Commissioner of Public Works, I'm speaking on behalf of Rick Spire. I did sit in on the interview process for the different companies, and it was in agreement that this was the right company to move forward with. If you guys remember, last year, we scrambled to get some security guards down. Um, I'd want to, financial, I want to say we made almost twenty thousand that first weekend, but it, it just makes you wonder how much did we let go on capture. I want to say this much to, to everybody, that the takeaway from all the interviews we did is that parking is actually, has, it's a commodity. And we, over time, are going to have to readjust how we think about it. You know, certainly, this program offers free parking for our residents. But at the end of the day, if you have a parking lot full of residents doing free parking, which they paid for in the taxes, you still have to provide services. Public Works has to come by, pick up the cans, sweep the streets. You know, so there, there are some costs. What we quickly found is that the old method of doing it is not the way to go. The license plate readers, um, the, the kiosks are not operational. They will not be operational for the summer. The, the way forward is license plate readers. What's really interesting with this new technology is you can be involved in the back door of the police department, so that now, and when a file one or a file five, that's a stolen car, uh, goes through and reaches that license plate reader, an alert goes to the police department. And uh, it's just, it's, it's, it's really cut down on a lot of the crime. And, uh, it's just, it's, it's, it's really cut down on a lot of the crime, uh, ever since we put the cameras on. We have the ability to adjust the pricing, so you'll see in your packet that Fourth of July, Savon Rock Festival, if we were to declare that as a, a special event, not something that we would be doing free parking on, we've done in the past, you could do that, you can adjust the pricing as we go along, so if we see that, um, we want to offer a special rate late at night, so being a beach community, if people are using these parking lots when you ordinarily wouldn't get some of it, you can go for a, an adjusted rate if you want to. We, the urgency to get this done is we want to capture, um, the additional piece to this guys is Abner and Stevens. So, um, some of you have been to Abner and, and to Stevens and have helped me clean it up a million times, and we clean it on the weekend, the, the following week, it's just destroyed. I have gone to Abner and to Stevens many times myself, various times of the day, I wanted to see who we were affecting with this. And I promise you, at five oh five, when you see the VA leave, Stevens Ave is wiped out. It's so bad that I cannot service the road Monday through Friday, we actually have to come in and pay either Saturday or do it at night because you just can't access these streets. It is absolute parking for VA. We are not impacting, uh, visitors to the VA, these are employees. I, I, I ask you to look if you think we would be impacting them. And, and then I would ask you down the road to, to, to think about, the next wave of this will be to come back and ask you to consider, you know, the city's municipal parking lots that don't earn any taxes. We provide them as a benefit to the businesses. The, with this, if we implement this, the businesses could actually book the spaces for their businesses, that they would subsidize it themselves. So I would ask you to consider, down the road, Vos, Scoreboards, Duffy's. This municipal parking lot is complicated because it's tied to several businesses and apartments, but all the other ones, we should, you know, we should monetize them and, and, you know, start cleaning them up and things like that.
To my committee, do we have any questions in the finance committee? Yes.
So I've used, um, these types of kiosks before through the app system when I've gone on vacation.
No kiosk, the phone.
The phone, right, uh, through an app. Um, so this would be through an app system, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and is there gonna be an hourly rate and full-day rate options?
Yes.
Okay, and do we know what those numbers are yet?
No, I mean, we, sort of, the New Haven model is two fifty an hour, but I, as I said to you before, I do think we should give some thought to, once we implement this, you know, um, we'll have to analyze the feedback.
Right.
And adjust going forward because being a beach community.
Mm-hmm.
It, it might get used more than if it weren't a beach community.
Right, that makes sense.
If that's a fair answer.
Yes, absolutely. Um, and will there be any long-term or seasonal memberships for people that are out of state?
That's not envisioned.
That's not envisioned, okay.
Right.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Thank you, Chairwoman, that's all.
Thank you.
Do, does anyone have any relatives or any, um, any contact with anyone from this company, 'cause that's something MARB will ask?
Sure, so I'm not aware that anybody from this city, I, I can stipulate that the meetings I was in, nobody from, that was in those meetings, had ever met anybody from this company ever before.
Thank you.
And we'll, we'll, we, we have a detailed now disclosure form. They will be mandated to sign that disclosure form before this contract goes to bear.
Thank you.
So do we have a target date when this might start?
Oh, yes, I mean, we want to be in position for the summer season, absolutely. Uh, the, the company does all the signage, puts up all of the LPR, the readers, um, all the advertising, and also, the reason we really like this company is it does include a human being on the ground during the day. So if there are any issues, there's an actual human being here for it.
And have other cities, like, there's no kind of learning curve, 'cause most cities have it, it's not that we have to kind of slowly implement this or anything, right?
No, these, these guys are professionals, they, they're in some huge cities right now.
So they would be boots on the ground, making sure that this went through?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, who would this, um, who would they report to? What city, um, department would these folks report to?
So we've had extensive meetings with the PD because obviously, the collection of the tickets is something that has to be worked out and is worked out with the PD. Um, the, they would answer to the PD, um, as well as Public Works and the Parks Department.
Okay, um, does this do away with beach stickers?
Yes. Yes, it does. So the way, the way the program would work now is the tax department would, would give you an electronic list of everybody who's current with their taxes. That would be supplied to the company, it would be inputted, uh, into their system, and then when you go in, it'll read your license plate, you'd be fine. Other than that, let's just give you an example of how this works. If you're a stranger to our town, you drive, you go into one of our beach lots that has a license plate reader, from the moment you pass that reader, you have fifteen minutes to begin what they call a session. Now, if you stayed there for thirty minutes and you didn't do anything, you're automatically getting a ticket in the mail. Nobody's coming to see you, that's not how this works. But you would have fifteen-minute grace period, so like you came in, you couldn't find a spot, you leave, you didn't start a session.
Hmm. So, uh, uh, do we, does the council need to see a contract? 'Cause we haven't seen a contract or anything.
I think the resolution is clear that you're, as you normally do, you empower the mayor to enter into a contract.
Mm-hmm.
Pursuant to the terms that are outlined in the resolution. I don't think it's complicated, and I mean, it's a parking program, it's parking lots, and it's revenue. If, and the other part is, if there's any expansion of this, you know, if we were to monetize, for instance, uh, when the students come back, you want age parking or whatever, we would come back. Uh, we, we're not gonna just add on to this contract, or we're gonna, you're approving what we envisioned today. If we envision expansion, we would come back so that you guys are on, either on board or you're not on board for me.
Right. But there's no rates or anything that are mentioned in the resolution or anything like that, because we're still working that out?
Yeah, I think, so, this is the problem you have with first sessions, so, um, you, you really have to feel it out a little bit as to, um, you know, what the market's gonna bear. You know, it's a change for people, so we're just gonna have to see how things go and what the market bears. You know, they need to make a profit, they're gonna give us money. It isn't just about maximizing our amount, right? It's making sure that there's a safe public place for people to, you know, residents to go to. So all that has to be factored in, as Tom said, the maintenance of the lots, you know, we're factoring all this in, in terms of what, what is the price point. So I think we'll come up with, with the right price point. And again.
We will be in line, though, with other communities.
That's good, and beach community?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
'Cause that does make a difference. So, um, what percentage does the company get? Is it twenty? I, I didn't, okay.
Yeah, they get twenty percent.
Twenty percent, thank you. All right. Um, another question is, does this do away with the beach council, um, program?
It will, but not this summer, so what we talked about this summer was to keep them in place, us, to deal with some of the confusion. Uh, but we would anticipate that once people are on board with the program, that you theoretically, maybe you repurpose them, you know, that's not my decision to make.
Right.
We shouldn't need them.
Maybe they become more like hospitality.
Okay. And do fines and violations, like, do the amounts, are they gonna just be as, we're not gonna adjust any of our fines and tickets and stuff like that, right? All that will stay the same on the city then?
Yes.
The, and, and the, any disputes would actually be heard by our Board of Police Commissioners.
If that gets too onerous, we may come back to you and have a single volunteer hearing officer here for all those at one time.
Anybody else have anything, if I open it up to the whole council, please? Whoa, whoa, whoa! I love it, I love it. May I start here, Councilwoman Tucker?
Sure. So, um, you talked about the, um, beach stickers going away?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so you don't have any, there's nothing on the card that identifies the vehicle as, you know, appropriate to go, but it's linked to the license plate?
Mm-hmm.
So will there be, um, some, my car's in the shop, I have a loaner, and I have a rental car, like, how are you gonna know that I'm a resident, that I'm a tax-paying resident, and I'm current?
If you're a tax-paying resident and you are current and you're driving a rental car, you're gonna have to pay to park.
How would you do it now with the beach sticker?
I'm not sure.
The beach sticker?
I'm asking you.
You couldn't, the beach sticker has your license plate on it, you couldn't, you're not supposed to take it off and put it on anything else.
I'm just asking, because I'm just.
No, no, I'm, I'm just saying, like, right now, it's, it's, uh, specific to a car.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a change.
It's the same, it's no change.
All right. Then the other question I have is municipal lots, you're talking about municipal lots. What, what will happen, like, West Haven High's lot is empty.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and it's, is it considered a, it's not, it's a, it's city-owned property, right?
Sure.
So is it considered a municipal lot?
It's a, that's a great question.
Is it in play?
It is in play for special events. We've used it in the past for the Sa, for fireworks night, where we've actually put people there and collected money.
Right.
So we, we specifically brought that up to them, like, the, the fireworks night, we could, with just the flip of a switch, they could add that, if we needed it.
Okay. I think that's it for now.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tucker. Councilwoman?
Just, just to piggyback off Councilwoman Tucker for a second.
Mm-hmm.
It's not one of my questions, but now she alerted me to, to it. What happens with a leased car? Come back to Hyundai of, uh, America or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't come back to the homeowner. It's a leased car.
Mm-hmm.
So how are they gonna, how are they gonna park?
Yes, so that comes up now, again, no change, this doesn't change any of that, that's a problem. So they have to come in, they gotta talk to the assessor, they gotta talk to the tax collector, and we work it out. I've worked it out with, with plenty of taxpayers, so that that taxpayer can get on the list. But you have to be careful. There are people that think that their unique situation is such that they fit into this description that you have, there are other people that it's more complicated, that the lease is actually in the name of somebody else, and they don't really live in West Haven, and you get on and on. So each individual case in that situation is evaluated if the taxpayer feels they are deserving of free beach parking.
Thank you. Now to my question, if you don't mind.
Yes.
You're welcome. So Tom, I, I got a couple of questions for you, on Mr. McCarthy. So the Conference Center, Exhibit Seven, I imagine that would be taken off of this agreement?
Potentially.
Good. And then, how long is this agreement for? Potentially, what, five years?
Five years.
So with that being said, how do we, how do we base one point nine million dollars?
That's, I mean, that's, that's their number based on?
That's what they're telling us, they leave.
That's what we could.
Potentially see with the amount of lots.
Yes.
We actually aren't trusting them, that's a little less than they're.
Okay, and, 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 Mr. McCarthy, just one more time, if you would. So a resident goes in the lot, and explain that to me one more time about that fifteen-minute window.
Sure. So, um, there's a license plate reader, depending on how many entrances, each one is going to have at least one, many will have two. You will pass by that license plate reader, uh, it will, after fifteen minutes, if you do not get on the phone yourself, it will start a session. If you go in, can't find a parking spot, you leave, no session got started, you go to the next.
Okay, so even a resident will come in?
Mm-hmm.
And they have to start a session?
No, no, they don't.
Or they don't?
It'll, it'll read their plate.
It'll read the plate, so they're good to go?
They're good to go.
We're only talking about the folks that gotta pay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, nothing else.
Mr. McCarthy, uh, two questions I have. One, how about people that have dealer plates? How does that work?
It's, it's been an issue all along, um, and I would give you one other group that sort of falls in the donut hole, uh, which is like, take an organization like Community House, that has a van that, that takes residents down to, we've always had to come up with a workaround for some of those things, but there is no answer for a leased vehicle or for, you know, take a businessman that owns fifteen businesses in, in, in this town, that, he or she does not qualify for a, a sticker either. I mean, there, there are, there are definitely some donut holes that, here that I don't have an answer for, but that was always an issue.
Yeah, but for example, if you had a, like, I had a situation where, uh, you had a business, they, they're paying taxes on fifteen cars in the city. They lived in the city, but they were driving one of the bus, they didn't have, own any other cars, so we gave them a sticker on one of the business cards because they were, they lived here and they were taxpayers here. But again, they have to come in, it's a workaround, you know, they, they have to be patient and bear with us, and we check things out and make sure there's some legitimacy to it.
And we can give those license plates to the vendor.
Right.
We don't have to do a sticker, we let the vendor know that that's on the list.
Okay.
Well, my, my last question, who's gonna enforce the beach parking regulations on the side streets around the beach?
The police will. There, there, these guys' contract would only be for the beach parking lots, Abner and Stevens. PD would enforce everything else.
Okay, thank you.
We have license plate readers on the cars.
Please don't use the stickers. Yes, yes, yes. Yes. Every car has a license plate reader.
So we don't need stickers?
McCarthy, thank you very much for.
I'm sorry, I'm not Rich Spire, but I'm.
No, that's okay. Best I have. Couple things. Person comes from out of town, flip phone. What happens there? I know he's gonna get charged.
Mm-hmm.
Same thing, if he doesn't use the app, he's gonna get charged.
Yes.
And it, and when you leave it, when you leave, it also reads when you leave, correct?
Yes, coming in, going.
All right. The other thing is, sometimes we have projects down at the beach, and we have to have companies come in to that area. How would that work with them?
We did, we did bring that up, so I'm very mindful of that throughout the year, especially in the summer months, we have, I mean, I've dealt with it for many years now, where somebody's doing a wedding at home and they want to take the pictures at the beach. Inevitably, they make their way to us, we can do a, um, there, there's a way to inform them, and they can block out, uh, you know, ten spots for an hour for your event. Uh, it's really, the technology now is phenomenal. It, it, it gives us many more options than we ever had before.
There won't, there won't be anybody from this company there, though, right? Everything is done electronically?
No, no. It, it, this also provides for one person to be on the ground.
In each spot location?
No, 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 throughout West Haven.
Oh.
Available to, you know, respond to any, any issues. Typically, though, that type of event, we know about ahead of time.
Yeah.
And we are prepared for that. You know, I, look, the honest answer is, if someone decides to do it spur of the moment, they're gonna have to pay if they don't come and see us, but.
Right.
All the block parties, people know to call in and.
Yeah, but I'm talking, like, the project we have going on down at the beach now, and, you know, we have an outside concern, you know, working with us on that, so if they, they show up, um, you just tell the constable, so.
Well, we might be able to, we might have to come up with some license plates that can be assigned to, to get that person in.
Or, or we fold it into when we do the project, right? We're gonna have to work it out with the vendor, and we fold it into how we do the project. Because obviously, we couldn't have a bunch of projects, they're anticipating certain fees, too.
Right.
So you can't just make this, you know, all right, wave it, wave it, wave it, wave it. So it's just something we'd have to work around, but we might be able to, as we get, develop this, to anticipate things like that, where we could, you know, say, all right, we're gonna fold this into part of the price, part of the price is, there's a parking element here, 'cause you're only gonna be able to park there. That's, you know, unlike a city like New York or Boston or Chicago, that's what they That's, you know, unlike a city like New York or Boston or Chicago, that's what they do.
Uh, listen, I, I, I think it's a great idea, I just, we obviously gotta work out some kinks in the beginning, and I'm sure we're gonna have some angry residents that are getting billed, you know, whatever, so that'll be worked out. The, the last question I got, Palace Street, right now, did, no resident is allowed to park on Palace Street. Uh, well, you can, but you're gonna get a ticket. Once this is in place, would that change?
Potentially. Um, last year, we moved the farmer's market from the city gr- green here in front of the church uh, down to, uh, Palace Street, right-hand side at the end of Oak Street. Proved to be much more successful than here, I think something for us to build upon. Uh, one of the things we intend to go to the ci- uh, Police Commission for this year is for approval to actually put food trucks in that parking lot, uh, so that boardwalk walkers and the farmer's market will be able to avail themselves of it. Uh, then, potentially, I think we would consider, if the Police Commission approves that, we would then, I think, be ready to give up Palace Street to, uh, be parking as well. It would make sense at that point.
Right.
Anything else?
I'm all set.
Um, I have another question. So, you, you're from out of town, you drive into the parking lot, you download the app, and then you start the session. You don't have to guesstimate how long you're here?
No.
All you do is, you, once you set it, it's kind of like, set it and forget it, and then you, then you drive out, and it just takes the money from your card.
Uh, there's a couple of options, you can actually, my understanding is, you can prepay if you want to, say you wanna do two hours. The nice thing is, this will alert you, yeah, on your phone, fifteen minutes to go. So, you could re-up from your phone without getting off the, the beach. Uh, or it'll tell you, your session is about to be up.
Thank you.
So, if you don't do anything at all, though, does it keep running?
Yeah.
It'll keep running until you leave?
It won't, you're not gonna get fined for it, but it'll just charge, it continue, if you stay three hours instead of the two you said, it'll bill you for the three.
Say it again?
Say you only wanted to stay for two hours.
Right.
Then you're having a great time, you decide to stay another extra hour.
Yes.
You're not getting fined, you're just getting charged for the time you spent.
Time used.
But it'll give you the option at quarter to, say, you started at twelve, you have fifteen minutes left, you wanna add more time. Yes.
Okay.
So, it doesn't turn off until you drive past the?
Right, your session doesn't end till your license plate leaves.
Great, okay.
Councilwoman, um, Garcia?
Um, are we gonna have rates for the weekend and rates for during the week?
It's something we've discussed, um, and, and as I said earlier, there is a trial and error piece to this. Um, so, I very much am anxious to get it started, so we can begin to see. One of the options that was mentioned to us was, was, you know, at a certain point, maybe six P M, say it's X amount for the rest of, you know, till the lot closes. Some, so those, uh, all of that is on the, I don't think you're ever going to get a weekend rate.
Okay.
The, the beauty of this is, unlike what we've had, and what we have, there's nothing right now. But, but like what we have, we didn't have the flexibility, we do have the flexibility to do that with this. They, they can just flip a switch, and there it is.
Yeah, so, so in other words, it'll be, the council would be presented with, like, a bar, this is the way the others, uh, municipalities have it when they go. You'll ha- like, we'll put up, there'll be a bar, and I'll say, you know, Mondays, here's how many peo- you know, and you'll have your highest use. And so, it'll be up to you guys, you know, you guys will be able to adjust it at that time when you have that data. But you wouldn't wanna do that upfront, 'cause you don't know.
Until we know.
They're gonna lock us in, and find out that's a wrong thing to do.
Right.
But the data will be phenomenal, it'll, it'll be really good data.
Okay, and the other question I have is, um, are we gonna have some sort of deal where we can, um, like, let's say somebody wants to stay all day long, can they get, like, instead of paying for twelve hours, they pay for, like, ten, are we gonna have that?
The potential is there for that, yes.
Okay.
Seriously being considered as our first, as our entry.
Yeah, just to entice people.
And an hourly rate.
Right.
You decide which one you want.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
I just had a couple more questions. How, what is the process for a West Haven resident if they're past due on their taxes? How does that work exactly through the system?
Yeah, so, currently, if you're not current on your taxes, you wouldn't make it to the list on the phone app.
Do you get fined?
You don't, well. Well, you don't get fined, you, if you're.
Or a ticket.
No, I mean, you, but your normal tax. You have, you have interests, and you have, uh, late fees and so on in your taxes, but, would you be fi- no, oh, would you be fined if you used the lot?
Correct.
No, you'd be treated like an out-of-town resident.
Okay. Okay, so you wouldn't get a ticket if you were trying to use?
You could, if you didn't pay.
Right, that's what I mean.
Well, eventually.
Just like anyone else.
Right, absolutely.
So, if in addition to your taxes, you didn't pay the bill that came in the mail.
And do they mail you, if you get fined or get a ticket, do they mail it to your house, that's how it works, okay? And then for commercial trucks, how does that work? Are they able to use the system, or? If they need to use the beach or park there, how does that work?
We haven't adjusted for size, I, I mean, the short answer is yes, but obviously, if, I mean, I don't think we want eighteen-wheelers coming in and, you know, paying the.
Right.
The vehicle rate.
I think as long as it fits.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
As long as it's not abused, I, I, I can envision a commercial plate to being able to go in and paying the same rate as the out-of-towner.
Right, that works. And you said there wasn't anything specific for, like, holidays, if people were to, say, park at the high school and walk over to the beach?
This gives us the ability to do that.
Okay, great.
Um, we hadn't envisioned it for beach parking, we had envisioned it for special events.
Okay, great, thank you so much. That's it, thank you, Chairman.
So, Mr. McCarthy, um, the person, there's going to be a person from the company that will be, are they gonna be enforcing? Um, like, are they gonna be, like, if they see a violation, like, how would they let the PD know, like, how does that work?
They, 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 they wouldn't, so, uh, if you, if a person saw a crime being committed, they would call the PD. But any license, any car that went into the lot that didn't belong in the lot, say it was a stolen car, that information is going directly to the PD.
Right.
And, uh, then the PD will respond.
So, I'm trying to think, so what, what is this person that, from the company, like, what are his duties, what is he going to be doing?
Sure, so, i- if somebody had a problem in the lot, let's just say, that, and they caught it right away, they would call the number, that person would come over and try and resolve it for them.
Got you.
Right.
There's, there's another thing, too, that in some lots, we've just, it's just not feasible to put up a camera. And so, this person will have a handheld or a, a vehicle mount.
Like Sandy Point, where we don't have power right now.
Okay.
They, they will have a license plate reader, and they will periodically go through the parking lot and read the license plates. And wherever there's a license plate that hasn't started the session, this, he won't have to get out of his car or go up to the car, but there's no.
No confrontation?
No, exactly, but his license plate reader will, will, will detect that that car's not in a session, also not on the list, and, and a ticket will be sent to that person's home. So, that's the other issue.
Got you.
Yes, Councilman. I saved the best for last.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure. So, these readers, do we pay for those?
Yes. They get the money, so eighty-twenty split, and, uh, they, they get paid for all the equipment they put in first.
So, we pay for the readers first?
They, they, they pay for all the advertising, they pay for the signage, they pay for the electronic readers, but they recoup that first.
Oh, so, so, even though it's eighty-twenty, they recoup their money first before it gets to the eighty-twenty?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Two, I live over by Stevens Avenue, which you already know that. And Abner Street. Have you guys mapped out where you're gonna actually have these, because?
It's in your package.
Oh, okay, 'cause they're gonna end up coming back up onto my street and walk over instead.
We, we.
They're anticipating.
We, we're anticipating that happening, yeah.
'Cause you could put it in front of my house, I don't care, I don't have to pay, I live there, so.
I know.
And I've been a proponent of paid parking for the ten, twelve years I've been on this council, so, I am super, uh, uh, excited about this, 'cause you go almost anywhere in the United States, you have to pay to park.
I think, honestly, I think that, like I started this out with, the big takeaway for me personally was that we don't appreciate parking as a commodity.
No, it, it's a great revenue source, though, I mean, I had to go to Cape May when my parents were still around, and, damn, you couldn't go anywhere in Cape May without paying to park. And, and you're right, it wa- it was the same rate no matter where you went, it wasn't a different rate on the weekend, but if you didn't pay, there was a parking meter right there if you didn't pay.
Parking meter's twelve bucks an hour.
Twelve bucks an hour, that's huge, right, I mean, so, yeah, I'm super excited about it, I just, so, I didn't see the map, I didn't really read it, so. Are, are, are you going down King Street, you know, all the sides?
No, 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 right now, we're just asking for Abner and Stevens. Really, this is our first foray into on-street parking, and I think the, the advice is to go easy. See how, 'cause to your point, once we affect Stevens and Abner, I, I, I know that the initial reaction is gonna try some other street. So, we're, we're going to have to be vigilant, and, and then there'll be a police component to that, if we see Abner Stevens deserted, uh, then we'll.
Well, you'll be able to clean up Stevens easier.
Listen, it'll be much easier to clean it.
Listen, I, I'm su- I know how bad Stevens is, it's, it's the dumping ground there.
It's frustrating.
Talked about it a money time, so, thank you, and listen, I, I, again, I am super excited about paying to park. I would pay to park, it wouldn't matter to me, but.
We do everywhere.
Right, I, listen, go to New Haven, you gotta pay till nine o'clock at night. Thank you.
So, there's gonna be signage up saying, and that's part of this whole contract thing, thank you, and I'm sorry that I have to call Councilwoman Tucker.
I don't care.
She has another question, to Councilwoman Tucker.
One more question.
The best for last, right?
Photos, does it take a, like, the EZ Pass, when you go past the EZ Pass thing, does it take a photo of your vehicle and send that to you when you get your ticket in the mail?
It, it takes a photo of the license plate.
Okay.
I don't wanna stipulate that it sees the person, 'cause I, I can't attest to that, so I mean.
Okay.
So, probably, it takes the backplate, then, right, 'cause everybody has to have a backplate.
Yeah. Backplate on them?
No, um, some lots will have mul- will have, uh, readers up high and low. And each lot is, is unique, depending on the power and the configuration, one way in, one way out, that type of thing.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman.
If you wanted to expand this program to other areas, must even about, how long would it take to implement that?
Once we get this up and running, it's an hour.
An hour? Okay, great.
Just how long?
Oh, great, very nice, thank you.
Like, will we ever use this one on the colleges, college parking?
I, 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 I'm leaving you guys with this, I was astounded when I got educated on how other communities handle their parking. And it, it is something, I, I'm sa- I'm saying to you that we should be thinking about as the next step, the colleges, the, the city lots that we don't generate any tax revenue on, you know?
And where, this revenue that we make off of this, what are we gonna do with it? We have plans for it?
I'm gonna.
Any particular plans, Mr. Taylor? 'Cause we just don't wanna just have this money.
I know, flapping.
We wanna know what we wanna do with it, 'cause it sounds like we're gonna make a lot of money.
Boy, it's, well, first of all, we, yeah, you, you're conservatively budgeting the revenues, but we're not, we're not.
Already in the budget, so I can tell you what we're planning to do.
This is already in the budget?
Already, I gave it to you in a book not too long.
Yeah.
So. So, yes, it is in the book, uh, it is, it is budgeted, um, you know, that we get that in, so, uh, ultimately, it, it has an opportunity to reduce taxes, really, because you have a new revenue source that is not taxes. So, that, ultimately, that's what it does, you can still do all your other programs, and as you know, we have a lot of needs in the fund balance area.
And were you gonna say something, Lee?
No, 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 just that, when that, uh, as optimistic as I try to always be from this podium, we're not gonna be optimistic about, you know, the revenue we get, we're gonna be conservative about what we're predicting on the revenue, just so we don't overshoot.
Well, we think there's a lot of potential, and as, as we just, as we see more opportunities, additional streets, additional lots to add to this, you're immediately making money off of those spaces, because it's just one, what they call a U I.
Polls and, and, and a sign on it. You don't even, and you just.
How much are the readers?
That's, that's something they have a contract to do.
Yes, Councilman? Pardon?
Joe Pirtle probably can tell.
I can get you that if you want.
I like that, thank you.
Does the, uh, does the VA know we're doing this?
Um, well, it hasn't been approved yet, so, I wouldn't wanna.
I'm just, ask the question.
The answer is no, sir.
That's all you had to say?
It was, it will be implemented.
After the fact.
Once it's approved.
No, but before they do anything.
It's nothing until you guys put your stamp on it.
True, absolut- I've agreed, I'm not, I just, listen, I'm sure those people are, again, like, in front of my house, which I could care less, unless you got a meter there, and then you park there.
We will, we will be as nimble as a Russian bell.
You could get on your toes like that, huh? You said it, you said we.
I couldn't get on my heels like that.
Alright, moving along.
Yes, I am all done.
Okay, 'cause it's getting kinda.
It is getting way, way.
Councilwoman Garcia?
Just one more question, um, I was thinking, because there's no cameras at being implemented at Sandy Point right now, or down Beach Street, I'm wondering, um, is there any way that this, uh, system, the scanners can work with the police cameras in the future, or could it act like a police camera in terms of, like, seeing someone that entered in and the crime hap- happened in the parking lot?
That, that is currently what's happening now.
Okay.
So, um, for example, at Sandy Point, where we have no power.
Right.
When the human goes in with a mobile license plate reader, if that's a file one stolen car, it goes automatically to the PD. And then our PD would respond.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
I get it, okay, thank you.
We'll be increasing the frequency, I mean, it's not only with the police department doing their normal routes. If, and, uh, there'll also be an employee of this company who's looking to collect revenues.
And so, and literally, now, as a police car is driving by, it's picking, it automatically reads the license plate, so, the difference now is a, a police officer is not necessarily actively looking for that car, it flashes up on our screen now. So, it's, it's really exciting, the technology.
Is that it, any other questions? Okay, well, I'm gonna ask the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, in my committee. Yes, I'm sorry. Aye. And, well, that's all of us, so, um, the committee on.
Motion carries unanimously.
It does, yes, it does, carry unanimously, thank you. So, my, my, my committee, um, Communication B, on, um, Premier Parking Services LLC targeting, um, um, finance has closed, what am I doing?
C and I.
Oh, that's right, I forgot, you said too much time. I was trying to get away with it. Alright, we haven't closed, but B is passed, thank you. We have before us Communication C from Nancy Rossi, Mayor regarding the budget transfer from C D A block grant, um, F Y twenty-two, twenty-three to Public Works, um, paving, street paving. Um, Mark, you wanna come up? Oh, are you?
Good, how are you, Councilwoman?
I approve the motion.
Are we bringing it out? Yeah, we're bringing it out for discussion, only.
And then you have to second.
Second.
For discussion.
For discussion. Yes.
Um, what, what we're doing here is, during COVID, our rehab activity decreased significantly, and even right now, due to these high inflationary times, um, people just aren't, the low, uh, uh, at least the low to moderate income people of the town aren't, um, engaging in a rehab, they're, uh, my feeling is, they're just having trouble going paycheck to paycheck at this point in time. Um, simultaneously, what has happened is, we've taken in, um, several payouts to our rehab program, that's increased our rehab account significantly. So, what we're proposing is, is that we take four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of this, and we help to use it to do some of the street paving in the low to moderate income sections of town, and that's where we work together with the Department of Public Works.
So, have any application, first of all, well, how much is in this pot?
Uh, a little bit over eight hundred thousand, so that would leave four hundred thousand in there for the future. We do see some green shoots now, um, we're starting, now that I've hired a housing specialist in the department, um, he's working together with Mike Walsh to really get the programs, start promoting the programs, and get the, the word out there that we have this money available for rehab loans.
So, how was it promoted before?
We were doing the same thing, we've been, I mean, I have five thousand dollars a year that I've been spending on advertising. Once again, we've been using word of mouth, we've been, we've been doing everything we can to promote the programs all along, but once again, it was due to COVID, it's due to high inflation, it's just significantly de- But once again, it was due to COVID, it's due to high inflation. It's just significantly decreased.
And it's also due because we didn't have an inspector for a while, too, right?
Correct.
So had any applications come in where they, you know, had to be denied because there was a lack of an inspector?
No, no person has ever been denied.
So, right, so it would be like we held on to it and we just waited.
Let me, let me rephrase that. No qualified application has ever been denied. There have been people that have submitted applications, but they were over income.
Are there any questions on the committee? There are nothing? Okay, um. And this is kind of an in-house question. So this went before the members on the committee of the CDA and they.
It did. It was approved unanimously, and we also put out an advertisement.
I saw that.
And advertised it for a period of thirty days to the community.
And you got no response, is that all?
No.
Okay. All right, anybody outside of the committee?
Okay, low to moderate income. You you described the the amount of income that the person makes, that that determines whether or not they're eligible for the, for these funds.
Correct.
What range is it?
Um, I I can't tell you exactly, but what I can tell you is a a single person that makes over, and and I'm using approximate figures off the top of my head, sixty-two or sixty-three thousand dollars would not be eligible.
So you have to make less than.
So you'd have to make less than, a single person household would have to make less than sixty-three thousand dollars annually to qualify. A two-person household, we're probably talking around seventy thousand. Three-person household, seventy-five. Four-person household, eighty.
So is there a scale available for people to know whether they qualify?
Absolutely, that's right inside the application when we give it to them. And we verbally explain that when we're
All right.
handing out the application to people.
Okay. Then you said that the, um, I think I heard you say that there, the the area is also considered moderate to low income areas?
Um, if if somebody's doing a rehab, they don't have to do, it's all done by their household income. They don't have to live in a low to moderate area.
Right.
But the street paving, we have to do that in low to moderate income areas, and we work together with Public Works to
So how do you define a low to moderate income area? Where and what state is that?
Census tract.
So, for example, where this money went was actually in the Second Avenue. It's a perfect illustration. A section of Second Avenue from the water to a certain point did not qualify. We did not use CDA money there. Uh, we used it only in the affected area of Second Avenue.
So tell me again how you define low to moderate income in an area, because you said census census tract. So what is that based off? Income?
Yeah.
So you're going by?
House values, income.
So is that in the application as well, the definition? Well, that's what I'm getting at. So how are you determining? Because did, so you, we sit here all the time and we listen to people complain about the need for paving and all that. There's a budget for that. You're now asking for five hundred thousand dollars of money that's earmarked for people who are low income to have that taken away from them to put towards paving. So I'm just trying, and then you're saying that it's gonna go into a low to moderate income area. And I'm just trying to figure out where that is in West Haven. How are you defining that?
If if you want, what I can do is I can send out the twenty-twenty-three HUD map that outlines the census tract districts.
If you're gonna just be really obvious about it, when we did the enterprise zone, it had to have a piece of the census tract that we're talking about, for instance, where you have public housing, right? Where you have density of public housing, you're gonna have a census tract that fits his definition.
Right. So is Second Avenue part of that?
Well, a portion of it is, but a portion of it isn't. So, um, and then, of course, there are other houses that can bring you out of that. But the census tracts are defined, you know, the census comes once every ten years and you're pretty much, that's where you're at. And we have census tracts for the whole city.
Okay. So that's where you, that's how you're determining where these funds will go?
Yes.
Correct.
When you, when you do the paving. All right, thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Uh, what exactly did the CDA committee go to approve it?
The CDA committee has already approved, voted to approve the bu- oh, oh, this transfer? They approved it, uh, back in February.
Do you know the exact date?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay, um, because I noticed that it wasn't in the meeting minutes online, it wasn't uploaded. So could we have that uploaded?
Certainly.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else?
Um, that's it, Chairman. Thank you.
And, um, since this is like federal grant money, uh, is it allowed? How do we know if it's allowed from the federal government to transfer it? I mean, you may know it. I don't know that.
Um, if you remember, years ago, probably about three or four years ago, I gave to you, um, a document that we worked together with HUD to outline the processes in which CDA would do amendments to the budget. Now, an amendment means a change in purpose of funds. So now we're changing, um, the purpose of rehabilitation to the purpose of paving. Okay? And the procedure that we followed is all in accordance to that document, which the City Council has approved.
So we have an aging, like our houses here in West Haven are aging. So I'm kinda surprised that more people aren't like really tapping into, um, the funds to keep their houses up, roofs and.
Yeah, once again, I I think in the future, we're gonna have a glut because what's what's gonna happen is they're gonna get to a point where they can't ignore some of the things that may happen. They just keep putting it off and putting it off because they don't have the funds. This is, once again, the rehab program is a loan program.
Right.
It's it's sort of like, it's a wonderful life. We loan out the money for them to fix their problem, and then they have to pay us back. And then we use that money to loan out again to other people. Um, and I think that there, even with these low interest loans that we give them, they're just not willing at this point to take on an extra expense because they they have no money left over. A lot of these people were out of work during COVID, um, and now with the high inflation, you you gotta go, a low to moderate income person has to go and spend eight dollars for a dozen eggs. What kind of money do they have left over to do a rehab project?
So before COVID, though, you got, you had a lot of applicants and a lot of jobs.
Yeah, and and, you know, the the difference is sort of illustrated with, um, the difference between handicap ramps and the rehab projects. Now handicap ramps, we've done twenty to thirty handicap ramps during this period. But that's a grant. We're giving them the money.
Come, that doesn't come out of this, though.
It does. Some of the funds, if, it, because I don't have enough money set in the budget to do handicap ramps. So then we tap into the rehab funds in order to do that, because it's rehab.
Okay. Now, is there a list of streets already? Do we have a list of streets, um, that, if this should pass, that we're going to pave?
Yes.
This will take care of a portion of Second Avenue.
Oh, this is only for Second Avenue only?
Street paving is expen- that's inflation.
No, I know, but that's good to know. I don't know, I don't know that I understood that. Did anybody understand that?
No, I did not. Wow.
What is your question? Well, I knew it wasn't a lot of streets, but I didn't know it was just one street.
It's not even one street.
Well, I didn't even know that it was already.
Right.
So this, oh, gosh.
My only, my only thought is, is I was asked, if you needed to spend money quickly, could I? Of course I can. See, I could pay forever.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is part of a of a plan that we've worked out with HUD, because we have to spend these, the, this funding in a timely manner. We have a deadline date of coming up in May, where we have to show that we've expended these funds. We were discussing that earlier, even with the ARPA funds, you have deadlines, you gotta spend this money. You can't hold on to it forever. So, we're trying to spend down some of this money.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So what this, with this money being transferred, then all of Second Avenue will be paid?
Not all, a portion of it.
He's gonna pave all of Second Avenue.
Oh, all, but but that not all with CDA funds.
Right, 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 right. So you asked my question, the whole street will be paved.
And this funding will be put where it's appropriate and meets the guidelines. I've already, we've done all sidewalks already. A combination of low zip, you know, so where we had to use the right funds, we did. The whole, the street's ready now. It's gonna be completely paved.
Yes, Councilwoman.
So I was under the impression that Second Avenue was being, um, paid by the gas company because the gas lines were dug up.
They they never pay for the entire thing. Um, all they'll do is, uh, you can work a deal where they'll give you forty percent, uh, and then you pay it yourself. They'll give you forty percent for that. They they never tear up the whole street. They tear up, you know, they get down the crown. So they give you forty percent.
Okay.
Any, yes, Councilwoman?
So Mark, just real quick, so this is an appropriated use through HUD to pave?
Yes, HUD, uh, CDBG funds can be used for paving in low to moderate census tracts.
Okay, and you're you're at the point now, if you're saying, if you don't do it, if you don't use it, you're gonna lose it because you're gonna give it back in May.
I I don't think HUD would say we're gonna lose it, but I think what they're gonna do is they're gonna come in and they're gonna say, all right, Mark, now let's sit down and you're gonna have to start going through a whole big plan. And they're gonna be coming in and doing more monitoring and so on and so forth in order to.
Okay. But in there, I raise it's appropriated use.
Yeah.
Right?
Oh, yeah.
Nothing else. Thank you.
Anybody else? Um, Mr. Chairman?
Mark, let me ask you something. When somebody comes to you and they wanna come and do something to their home with this money, they gotta pay it back?
Yes.
Oh, they do?
It's a loan program.
Impression. Oh, okay. Now, if you don't use this money, does that mean the following year you'll get less of money?
No.
No?
No, um, HUD arrives at the figure they give the city by a a complicated formula. Up at National.
So HUD makes the decision how much money the city gets?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
What's the percent on those low interest rate, um, loans?
Uh, depending on how we evaluate the application and the risks associated with it, it could be, it could range anywhere from a zero percent to a three percent loan.
And how long are the loans usually, like, spread out?
Usually for, um, either a period of ten to fifteen years. In some cases, I might look at it and say twenty. If the person would have a really seriously hard time paying it in fifteen. Once again, depending on the project, I mean, if if there's a boiler that blew and somebody's gonna, and we have a senior citizen that's gonna freeze to death, I'm gonna try to do everything I can to make this affordable
Right.
to the person.
And I know we're talking more about the loan, but we got you here, so you're captive right now. Like, what, like, how much money, like, is there a a cap on how much?
Twenty thousand dollars.
So from what to twenty thousand? Is there a?
Zero, zero to twenty thousand dollars.
Any other questions? Does this fund, does it like accumulate, 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 or every year you have to?
Yeah, you'll see. When when I give you the budget, I always budget a hundred thousand dollars a year. Now, some years I take in less, some years I take in more. Like I said during COVID, I had several large payouts. Most likely because some older senior citizens died from COVID and the loan had to get paid paid off before they liquidated the house and they went through probate. So they had to pay us. They had to finish paying their loan.
Is there a amount of time you have to stay in the house, like after you get the loan, like some say like five?
They own the house. They 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 can, they stay in it for.
Or they can, like, just pay that loan back if they should.
They can always prepay the loan, yeah.
All right, all right. Any other questions? Yes, Councilwoman Donovan?
Mark, thank you very much, uh, not only for showing up, but for everything that you do there. You, I've seen you at work and stuff that you do to go above and beyond. I I do applaud you for that. Uh, now you were talking about handicap ramps. That is separate. So if somebody needed a handicap ramp, there's an application they need to fill out, correct?
And then? Yes.
Is that a fund? Is that a grant? If it's approved, is that a grant for them or is that a loan for them?
That is a grant. That's a grant program.
Okay. And that would be something they would install, have it installed? Is that how that works or is?
Well, that that's something that we work together with the homeowner to get installed.
Okay.
We have our list of of pre-qualified vendors that we work with. We put it out to bid. Um, then we show the homeowners the bids and ultimately they make the decision when they, when they look at the bids.
All right. Thank you again for everything you do. I'm also, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, I think that's the end of our discussion. Um, we really can't vote on it because we don't have a quorum to vote on it. So we're holding it for our next meeting.
Thought you had three. You just voted on.
I have to abstain.
We're holding it.
I don't, I don't think there's any reason why you would have to abstain.
Thank you. Next, we have Communication I. And that is from March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three's agenda from Tom McCarthy, um, Commissioner of Public Works regarding city-owned and operated electrical, electric vehicle facilities, um, retail charge rate and policies, Mr. McCarthy.
Okay, let me preface this by telling you I know nothing about electric vehicles.
Well, tell us what you do now.
Bringing this out favorably or just, are we bringing it out favorably or for discussion?
We are bringing it out favorably. Oh, yeah. Violating my own rules.
All right, I'll tell you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll tell you what I know. A grant came our way to put an electric vehicle charging station down here along with the opportunity to purchase some electric vehicles, which we did. Doug Holter ran this project, did a very, very good job with it. Um, the update, as I understand it from just an hour ago, was that there was a switch we were waiting for. The switch is now in our possession. The last thing that has to be done is to build a bridge. I'm gonna read this because I don't quite understand. A bridge between the cameras, the payment interface, and the network. Double cost between two and four thousand dollars to get done. We have that money. And it should take about a week once we approve a contract. Um, at that point, everything else is what you see here as a guess. I mean, we've never had electric vehicle station before. I don't know how much money it's going to bring in. I don't know whether people will use it. As you see, there's a lot of, um, we made a lot of submissions in here. We made, we're making a lot of guesses. Um, what I would ask is if you do approve it, I think the appropriate thing to do is to come back to you. You know, you guys pick a a a period of months where we bring back the information to you. And then I think we could maybe revisit, are we charging the right amount and are people using it? You know, I don't know of any other way to, there's a little bit of a leap of faith here. I'm being straight with you. But I wouldn't go too long before we come back and talk about it.
So I see that you have the example of this upgraded. So that's the, but how about cities? Are there any towns or anything that's doing it? Where, you know, are ready? Are we gonna be like the first municipal?
We were among the first towns to do this.
And right now, I think we have ten. Do we have ten stations here, like in City Hall parking lot?
Ten.
The electrical stations?
No, no, they're they're out in the parking lot. We've reserved ten. Um, the, we have two different charges. We have our own local one, which is right in front of the art center. And then you have the pay one, which will be out in the parking lot itself. And that will be the ten total, right?
Ten total, yes.
But we will be, um, segregating a couple for the municipal cars.
Okay, all right.
Because they're gonna be parked there all the time.
Yeah. Any questions from Councilwoman Carr?
Um, if I remember correctly, CBS was the first place in West Haven.
If I remember correctly, CVS was the first place in West Haven to have a charging station. Do they charge or is it free?
Oh, no, they charge.
They charge?
Yeah, I think.
Do you know what it is?
Um, we, we did some research and we listed a whole bunch of the fees. Area charging prices on the second page. CVS Campbell Avenue, twenty-one dollars per hour, six, it's the most, sixty-eight cents per mile. We were coming in at three cents per mile.
And in?
But the ranges, there are some free ones. Um, Charge Point, New Haven, Parking Authority, it's free.
Okay.
All the other ones are, you know, highest is sixty-eight and then two cents, five cents. So we, again, we didn't try and be anywhere we shouldn't be.
And just out of curiosity, do you know how many people in West Haven have electric cars?
I know.
Yeah, I didn't think so. But, I mean, that's, how would we even track that?
I don't know, is there, is there anybody to know what, how many electric cars in this city?
Yeah, not actually, let me put it this way, not easy. We, it's not, it's not, we haven't segregated that data. I guess we could.
The normal Tesla takes about twenty to thirty bucks to fill up, to get fully charged.
So that would be like a half hour?
Yeah.
Um, what we, what we learned here was that, um, I think we put that in free.
Like how long it takes?
Our rates would be based on time, amount of the energy that they're sucking out of the machine.
Yes.
And that's measured by time?
By time.
Yeah. So the rate would be per hour. And the calculations of how many miles are meant to whatever they get for, is, is, depends on the condition of the car.
Well, the charge, the charge will always be affected by whatever we're paying for a kilowatt hour.
What do you do like when people like, they can just?
Just kinda use this as a parking place, right? You plug in your car, you go home, you know, you don't come back until the next morning.
There are, there are cameras associated, there are cameras on those poles. So that's, that bridge will tie those cameras to the interface. So, so yes, you would, would not be able to. I also reserve the right, if we have a winter storm where this becomes a, a point of refuge, we would suspend it at that point. We, we've talked about flipping that switch because that parking would be done overnight.
So, but we would have a way, like if somebody's just using it every night just to, like I said, to park here, there's a way to?
Yes.
Confront that offense?
We'll see that we are not earning anything.
Right.
The opportunity costs.
So is this like a break even kind of thing or are we, we can, are we making any money off?
We're making an administrative fee.
We, we would make some money off of it if it gets used, but again, you, you know, I'll be honest, I was here one, one Saturday afternoon and somebody came in with like Seattle, Washington plates and said, I'm here to charge the cars and it's not, it's not ready yet. So I guess there are some people.
Oh, definitely are. Definitely are.
I just don't know how to quantify it yet.
Any questions on the committee, Councilman?
Do you have an expected timeframe, um, for the trial period until you do a reassessment on the rate?
I would defer to you guys on what you think is an appropriate time to start it out and come back to you.
Um, and do you foresee there being any issue with public demand over city vehicle use?
No, because we have two separate units, we have our own, a private one in, in the back of the art center.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Of course.
Thank you, Chairman. Oh, and Councilman O'Connor, you have anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Opening up to the whole council, um, councilman, was her?
Tom, in order to use these, you use your credit card, right?
Yes.
I thought so. Okay, that's all I had to ask.
Councilman Tucker?
Did anybody consider the parking that you're talking about on the beach for these, um, electric charging stations to be added to that area?
Not right now. Not right now, I mean, um, then, then you're doing two things, like you're using, so, yeah, we could look at it if you, if you wanted.
Yeah, but don't, don't forget, the, the infrastructure you created here was through a grant, right? So it, it's a little more complicated than doing that. So, uh, your, your infrastructure does have a cost if we're not gonna do a grant. I, it, I don't think this is gonna be the moneymaker that, you know, the parking we talked about before.
Right.
Just anecdotally, I will say to you, I did go down and say, for example, look at CVS's, they have, I wanna say like twenty, twenty empty spaces.
They're empty.
So it's, I don't wanna devote too much to this till we know what we're dealing with.
All right. And we can start this, when did you say? Because we got the parts, right?
I have the switch, switches is in our possession. We have to build a bridge, which I'm told is, is, I don't know.
Build a bridge.
Electronically, I have no idea.
I just wanna mention our IT department's down to basically one person on site right now from three. We do have also another open position itself.
There's, there is a, a bit of a, an issue there.
I'm in the queue with IT.
It's in the queue and it's, you know, when, when does it become more important, you know, than other projects and things that they have to do every day?
Any other questions? Yes?
Can I ask you a question about heating? Just a, a couple quick.
Do you want to ask?
I may not answer them, I'll, I'll take the question.
Okay, since you're here.
Yeah, and if I don't have an answer, I'll take the question.
Okay. Um, I'm wondering about, um, Painter Drive.
Okay.
Is that on the list?
Not, not currently.
Not currently on the list, there's a big crater there, you, you probably know about it, a lady lost.
So we do have a separate fund. And if the road is not a road that is in dire need of complete removal and restoration, uh, we, we also have a contract with Lady for a patching. So we have been out giving them.
Okay.
So we can add that to.
Could you, just so we could get that bit?
I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, it's, it's, um, what's that street, I think it's Dark Street?
I did Dark.
Oh, you did it already, okay, good, all right.
I did Dark, uh, last year, or the year before.
Are you sure?
I'm positive, I didn't do Painters, but I'm.
I don't know what she's talking about then. What, what was she talking about?
There is one on Painter, there's a pretty, someone just posted on Facebook that she lost her tire from it. So I'm not sure exactly where it is, but I know it's on Painter Drive somewhere.
I will, I will commit to, I will look at Painter Drive, but I did on.
Okay, and then also, could, could you take a look at, um, Blum, um, from, yeah, it's bad. From, uh, start of Second Avenue down, it gets really bad around, um, Morse.
Yeah, so the only thing I will say to Council, I have paid every dollar that you guys have given me. If you have any additional dollars, I will pay those too. We need more paid dollars.
Could we do the potholes on those, those two roads, at least, or could you look at them?
I have both now.
And, and I think rather than just throw streets out, maybe we can email him and just give him the list of the areas that are in our, in our, um, on our streets and our districts.
Can we get back to that, uh, Communication I?
Yes, 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 yes. All right, so I opened it up to the whole council, are there any questions, any more questions for Mr. McCarthy? I have a question. Can you? Because I was asked to get.
Are you leaving?
No.
Okay.
All right, because I was asked to get back to the communication.
Well, I'm planning, if you go, if you're done with me, I'm planning to go home.
Oh, so.
Seven o'clock this morning.
Yes. All right, so I have a question about dumping.
Okay.
All right, so there's a problem with dumping, so, um, and I can give you the, the address, it's Peabody Street, obviously. But there's furniture being dumped, there's all kind of stuff being dumped in the woods. And I was asked by one of the constituents to make you aware, to see whether or not you can.
Uh, you wouldn't happen to have a numeric on Peabody?
It's the beginning, it's right after the restaurant.
All right, I will.
The woods right behind the restaurant.
Flight will be out to that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Back to I. All right, um, for the committee, well in favor? Any extensions, any? It passes unanimously. You gonna say something?
I just had a quick question for you, the, the resolution that I have, is the correct one, correct? For this particular? Uh, it's going back, so I just wanted to make sure that you, I don't know if Diane showed it to you. He mentioned coming back to the council and I wanted to just make sure that something about trial, it's not mentioned anything about that over there. It says come, come back annually.
Yeah.
Is that direct?
Yes. Now she's talking about, she's, I know, I know. This is that we don't see time enough, so we're just gonna just ask all the.